Abby, are you ready? Mayor Protem, we're ready whenever you are.
All right, let's get the meeting started and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the City Council Special Meeting of May twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four. We thank you for coming and would like to remind all in attendance that our meetings are subject to the rules of decorum that are posted inside the chamber doors. These rules are in effect while all meetings are in session as well as during breaks and transitions between meetings. We want to be sure all feel welcome and remind all there is an expectation that no attendee shall disrupt this meeting and that threats and intimidation are prohibited. No attendee shall engage in audible expressions of support or opposition for any speaker. Signs and placards are prohibited and all attendees shall remain seated in the seats provided, not in the aisles, nor shall the doorways be blocked. And since this is a special meeting, we do not have public comment this evening. So let's start with roll call.
Counselor Carmelia.
Present.
Counselor Demat.
Present.
Counselor Azadi.
Here.
Counselor Ha.
Present.
Mayor McNally. Mayor Protem Normella.
Here.
And Counselor Ireland.
Here.
Can I have a motion to excuse Mayor McNally?
So moved.
Second.
You can do a voice vote, so.
Oh, okay. And by the sound of ayes?
Aye.
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 Okay, we're going to move on to the purpose of the council meeting today and we're going to be looking at the second reading of Counselor Bill Number Fifteen regarding creating the Ward Advisory Committee. Do I have a motion? Counselor Demat?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I move to pass Counselor Bill Number Fifteen on second reading, creating Ward Advisory Committee to evaluate and advise on establishment of Ward System.
Do I have a second? Counselor Ha?
I second.
Any discussion?
Counselor Carmelia.
Yes.
Counselor Demat.
Yes.
Counselor Azadi.
Yes.
Counselor Ha.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Normella.
Yes.
And Counselor Ireland.
Yes.
The motion passes on a six-zero vote.
Okay, we're going to appointments and resignations. So in this timeframe, we're going to appoint members to serve on the advisory committee for the creation of the Ward System and we're going to ask that each city councilor appoint one member to the committee. And we're going to actually start with Mr. Lindsay for the mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Normella. The mayor has emailed me and nominated Dino Valenti to serve as her representative.
And I'll just go down the aisle here. Counselor Azadi?
I appoint Annie Miller.
Counselor Carmelia?
I appoint Bev Bishop.
Counselor Demat?
Bill Christopher.
Counselor Ha?
Tom Jergens.
Counselor Ireland?
Elise Jarvis.
I nominate Anita Sights. I think that's it unless, all right. This meeting is adjourned and we're going to go meet in the other room for the City Council Study Session. All right, let's begin the study session of May twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four. And we will start with City Council reports. So Counselor Azadi, you want to pick us off?
I have a request. I'd like to poll council to see if you guys are into this idea. But for the January, for the June third study session where the Dog Park recommendations will be held, can we carve out some time for Andrew of the Guardians to give a presentation of their recommendations rather than just us reading a fifty-page report? I think it might be best to hear it from them. They can clarify, they can explain it, to give him equal time with the staff recommendations.
So first of all, it's a busy night that night. We're planning four hours easy. We have two items on the agenda that night. One is Westminster Hills Open Space Management Plan. That has input, obviously, from the Guardian group. But we also, that is our initial budget retreat, if you will, or kickoff meeting with the council. And so we've got a host of things scheduled that night. And so from our estimates, we're looking for four and a half hours of meeting time just in and of itself, one. Two, I think the other thing to remember is it's a study session and so public comment, you know, is not something that we allow during study sessions. And then three, I think it's important for everybody to recognize that the Guardians are one constituent group that was participating in that. And so if you open it up for the Guardians, then where's the environmentalist? Where's the bike community? Where's the neighborhood? So I just think that that can become problematic. But it's up to you guys to decide what you want to do with that.
And I'll add to that, like, so for council, if we do want to carve out some time, that's one alternative. The other one, the other option is maybe we just have him in the audience, but we break protocol. Give the exception of if we have a question on the recommendations, we can ask Andrew to explain. Because I think we'll need someone that's not staff because they understand what they're, you know, they have a very thorough recommendation set that they want to give us, the Guardians, and we might need their expertise, someone to just answer a quick question. It's against the rules, but we can, these are arbitrary rules that we've made up. So if we want to give an exception, is the other?
One thought, no formal action occurs at a study session because that would require the regular meeting to actually implement whatever council's direction is. So you can also anticipate, I imagine, that will be comment on that night where you'll have stakeholders who wish to be heard before City Council takes its formal action. So just to keep that in mind, too, the study session isn't the time for the formal action of the council. It's really the regular meeting.
Yeah, we're not asking for formal action. We're asking for the input to teach us as what the purpose of the study session, the study session is supposed to be. So, yeah.
I was going to say, I like your idea. To your point, we could have them in the study session as we often have, you know, our experts in the seating area if we ever need to pull them up to clarify a point. If he'd be willing to be present for that, I feel like that's a fair thing to do.
I do, too.
Anybody else?
I'm in agreement.
Yep.
I'm just curious where that stops. I mean, I want to hear from the Guardians because I think it's important. And I think that we asked for their input to be put into the record. So I'm just curious, like, you're setting a new precedence that's never been a thing. So we have told people that wanted to participate tonight, no. So I just feel like it's, I'm just curious, you know, where that goes. Because these are our meetings and if you start introducing that, food for thought.
It's a good point.
Unfortunately, I think Counselor Demat is correct.
I think there's some protocol that maybe we need to change because I feel like this task force that we put together did not represent the survey. Why are we doing surveys when eighty percent of the people wanted to keep the Dog Park? Eighty percent of that task force should have been dog, people that wanted to keep a Dog Park if we're going to do a survey.
I don't, honestly, I don't disagree with your point. I guess my other, my bigger thing is just it's breaking protocol and it doesn't seem fair to the other groups, granted. Like, I have my personal opinion and that's the group I would like to hear from the most. So I'm going to be reading their information the most. But I think that what was pointed out about it being uneven, and I mean, you're going to set a precedence for all future meetings and that's something that's just never been done before. And I.
I understand that, but I'm thinking that the way we've been doing it in the past, is it representing the people or why were we doing these surveys? What are we doing with the data that we get back? People are asking us that, what are we doing with the data? If we're doing these surveys and we get the data that there's eighty percent want to keep it, but somehow we're finagling away not to keep it, I don't know how that represents the people.
Well, I don't understand what your point has to do with the study session.
Well, I'm just saying, maybe we need to change the way we do things.
So I'm fine with that as far as surveys, what I'm, and I'm not saying one way or another. What I said was, is I don't see how bringing citizen groups into our study sessions where we're hearing from experts and we're looking at the data, we're having a conversation with the seven policymakers who were elected by the people to make those decisions. I just, I'm curious how that, and how you think that's going to work out in practice.
So I think, to answer your question, Counselor, I think we can have one of their voices and have the other voices there, too. So have one representative of each of those groups be in the audience if we have questions.
May I ask how we are integrating? I know that an ask came from council in general for us to be able to evaluate the proposal from the Westy Dog Park folks. So how is that being integrated into the presentation of the information?
Yeah, so, you know, we've obviously got their input that they've provided to date. And, you know, that is factored in with the conversations that have been provided by the community advisory team, survey input, and, you know, and so I think what we've developed at this point is, you know, five different scenarios for what that would look like. From, you know, on the low end, you close it down and it's not a Dog Park, to the high end, all four hundred and twenty acres, you know, as they currently are, are off-leash. And then three variations in between. That's the land use piece, the legality piece of, you know, violating our current ordinances, which as I've shared is one of our current concerns. You know, those are really the two big things that we need to resolve sooner rather than later. But the implementation of this is significant when you talk about fencing and trails and, you know, signage, et cetera, expanding parking, those sorts of things. So, you know, in my world, I see this taking, whatever decision the council wants to make, I see this being several years in the full development of it. And so we will provide in the presentation and in the agenda materials, we'll provide options, we'll provide pros and cons. But that's really something that is going to take a while to implement. And so from a phasing approach, you know, you've got planning, you've certainly got coordination, you've got the execution piece of it, and then you've got the maintenance or the sustainment of it. I will tell you right now, depending upon what options that the council wants to choose, we're going to need more people to do that, which has budget implications, you know, over time, whether those be park rangers, whether those be parking enforcement folks, whether those be open space stewards. And so, you know, it's, it's a lot more involved than simply, you know, hey, let's draw some lines on a map and call it a day. And so it's going to take time to implement. But this is our first conversation with the council to get a feel for which, which one of those five options, if you were to choose one of those five options, do you want us to pursue and start to develop and flesh out?
And does one of those five options align with the Westy Dog Park?
Well, they're, I say land use, yes, because they want current state four hundred and twenty acres to remain off-leash. So that's the, on the high end, and there are variations all the way down to a closure. And I think that's a fair, you know, course of action, options for the council to consider. But, you know, it will depend on how the council chooses to go with land use, you know, in that regard as to what we do with the legal portion and updating or changing ordinances to support that course of action. That'll depend on how many people, you know, that we would request based upon the size of, you know, each of those areas. And so it, I think that in a lot of people's mind, this is something that, you know, just, we say, do it and it happens. There's a lot more to it than that. So the intent of the June third meeting is, is to, you know, provide you with all of the material and the background information. Certainly, you'd read it, come to, come to the meeting prepared to discuss. We're going to present five options for what this looks like on a map. Have that council discussion. That then in turn drives, you know, what we do with the legal questions that have been raised with ordinances, you know, capital planning, you know, and requirements, funding for people, those sorts of things. But that's going to, that's going to be followed. What's germane at this point is how much land do we want to dedicate to off-leash, on-leash, no-leash, you know, no use whatsoever, or keep the status quo?
Counselor Ha?
Yeah, my understanding is that the Dog Park Guardians have a pretty comprehensive proposal that goes beyond wanting to keep it at four hundred and twenty acres.
And I'm sure of that and that's great. You know, they're not the ones who have to execute it. So the staffs received a draft copy, to my knowledge. I'm not so sure we've received yet the final copy, so certainly looking forward to that. Are you aware of a, no, I'm not aware of a, of a final copy. But we did receive a draft copy from Andrew several weeks ago.
And I think council asked last time for that full to be included in the recommendations, in full.
Not in the recommendation in the agenda materials.
Okay.
In the agenda materials. And that will be what, when we receive that final recommendation, that there's a placeholder in our agenda memo for that to be included for the council to review.
So the only reason why I brought this up is because of, you know, we've heard the input from the community that the process was not to the quality that we had hoped to increase trust with the people. There are a lot of gaps in the process. So this is one way of at least showing to the people that, hey, no, we, we are going to hear you because they don't trust that their full recommendation is going to be shown to us in your proposal.
Whatever they give us, council will give you.
So this is a way of bridging that gap and building trust with people again. It's a simple thing we can do. It's a protocol that we made up as a council some year, many years ago to not have, you know, folks talk in a study session. But I think at least just having someone there in the audience that we can call upon if we ever, if we have a question is fair and is a show of trust.
And if I could, I think it's important for everybody to understand that, you know, we had four constituent groups on the community advisory team. We had the Guardians, we had the bike community, we had the environmental community, and we had the neighborhood community. And, you know, to my knowledge, one of those four groups has complained about the process. So I'm not so sure the process is as broken as everybody wants to believe just because we had a lot of people from that constituent group come and speak to the council. So I think, still think it's a very reasonable way for us to proceed on June third. Whether the council wants to take, you know, input from, from the audience, from the public, certainly something that, you know, you all can, can consider. I do agree that, you know, once you go down that path, you know, how do you, one, how do you open it up to everybody? But two, you know, when do you, how do you say no to people in the future? So.
This is an odd thing to be dealing with, to be frank, because I have concerns about how the process went. I want to make sure that we hear from the Guardians. What I, what I don't want is this to break our protocols in a way that you're going to have a hard time unwinding. So if you're going to do something like this, my recommendation or ask of the council would be that you work with staff to appoint somebody from each of those constituent groups that were part of, that you picked out of the, for the cat. So that you actually have people who are invited that are part of the study session versus just calling on people from the audience, because.
Yeah, that's what the poll is. Andrew was part of the cat.
Well, I know that, but then we were said, we'll just have him here to answer questions. So either if you want to make him part of the thing, I would be okay with that because then they're part of the study session. And if we're saying these are people that we need here in order to make what we feel is a educated decision on it, that's fine, that makes sense to me. But if we're just going to have people here that we potentially might ask questions of, I think that's going to get into some territory that I, I am not comfortable with.
Oh, so you're, you're in favor of bringing them into the presentation itself?
If you're, if you're going to allow staff to say what they think of balance, to ask people to make sure that you get those different constituent groups that were important for us to have part of that cat so that you don't, I mean, because Counselor, you said that we want to make sure that we're not breaking trust. I am, I don't know that I would agree with the sentiment that it was only one group that felt that that process was bad. But I want to make sure that, giving a voice to just one of those groups versus the other ones that we have to represent. You know what I mean? Like, I want to be balanced.
I get it, yeah, yeah.
Counselor Ha?
Yes, so I wanted to say what you said, that there were more than just the Guardians that complained. I mean, the mayor was the person who was there and she was concerned how those meetings were going because they had ten things that they needed to get through when they were only getting through two. And then I, I think the difference here with the protocol is that us as council asked for their proposal to be part of it. And so I don't think it would necessarily open it up to anybody who wants to be a part of a study session because this is a special situation where, you know, at the dais, we all said that we'd like this proposal to be a part of the recommendations. And so I think that's where the difference is in allowing them to be a part of the study session versus just allowing anyone.
I guess I don't, just because you're addressing what I said. I don't disagree with what you're saying. All I'm saying is if we're going to do it, let's make sure that it's representative of those different groups. I don't think that we want, you know, an entire cat in here. How many people were in that?
There were eleven people.
Eleven? And I mean, they couldn't get through, you know. So I want to, I just want to make sure we're being fair and representative of that whole group. Because I agree, I want to hear from that, that group that we asked to hear from, but.
Before, before you talked about that, you were asking like where the stopgap was. And so that's what I was addressing. So I think there was some miscommunication. I just meant that I think that might be where the stopgap is, is the fact that we asked for it as council.
Yep.
Counselor Carmelia?
I was just hoping to call the question. I, to the point that Counselor Demat makes, I also would be, you know, amenable to having the representatives included in a fair conversation with them, but included in the study session, so. Or, or the chair of the committee, right? So just to have some fairness and potentially setting us up for a longer term, how we integrate our committees that do the work into the study sessions to have a voice and a report out structure. So I think we can, you know, let's take our poll, but did you want to add something?
Well, you know, you talk about, I mean, the community advisory team was formed by the PRL Director and they provided input to the PRL Director so that the PRL Director can come back in study session and provide you with the recommendation moving, options towards a recommendation moving forward. And so, you know, that this idea of, you know, bringing the community members who've been working for the past two months for the PRL Director and then say, PRL Director, we appreciate your perspective, but we want to hear from all of these other people. You know, kind of makes me ask the question, why do a community advisory team? I mean, it really does because they were working for him. He's conveying the messages that he's gathered and the input that he's gathered over the past, what, three, three months or so? And he's providing as the council requested. The council requested that the final report be included in the agenda memo. So we are attaching that full report to the agenda memo so that you and the public have the recommendations of the Guardians in this case. But right now, the PRL Director, you know, is set up to answer the first or to ask the first major question in where we go from here. And that is, what are you looking at, council, from a four hundred and twenty acres current status, off-leash or all the way down to close it down, no dog access? And then three variations in between. Because until you answer that question, we're not going to have a way forward. You got to, that's the, the root issue here is, is how much of that land gets used for what purposes? And until we do that, we really can't move forward.
Counselor Carmelia?
Can we please call the question?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, I was, we were starting with responding to the poll. So Counselor Azadi, yes. Counselor Ha, yes.
I thought it sounded like a good idea upon hearing it, but I'm going to say no because I do think it opens us up to a can.
because I do think it opens us up to a can of worms that may be difficult to put back in the box, and we are receiving the full report in the memo. We'll be able to read that ahead of time.
Counselor Ha?
So we're voting to let Andrew come in and be like an expert on the dog park, so we can ask him questions if we have it. Is that what we're doing? He's an expert?
I think you've got representatives from the four distinct groups.
Oh, we're getting representatives from the four. That's what we're agreeing to. Okay.
Sorry, didn't clarify what we were voting on. So this is to have four, all four community representatives from the cat be integrated into the study session?
I'm a yes, then.
Counselor Jemont?
Excuse me. I'm gonna be a no, for the reasons I said, but I do hope that all those recommendations are in there, because if they're not, I'm gonna be looking for them. But I think as long as they're in there, we can make a decision without having to ask folk questions.
Similarly, I am a no, and I do want to correct the, we did ask that the proposal be actually included in the evaluation, not just the agenda.
Oh, yeah, yep. I guess my, my point is, is we're giving you, whenever they give us their final report or recommendation, we're giving that entire thing to you as part of the agenda material, so that you can read that. As I've said, if, if we're gonna try and solve Westminster Hill's open space on June third, that ain't happening. There's no way. You gotta start somewhere, and that's what, where the land, how you divvy up the land for future use. And so that's really what our presentation on the, on the third is all about, is, is how much, you know, dogs know dogs, and if so, dogs, how much of that land goes to dogs, off-leash. How do we protect the Greenway Trail? How do we mitigate the canal, et cetera? And so that's kind of what we've set up. I just don't want to set expectations that we've got the hundred percent solution, because we don't and we won't until we identify how that land is divvied up. That's, that's kind of step one.
So no, but Councilors Addy, do you have any additional report?
Uh, no.
Counselor Ha?
Yeah, so I had the opportunity to attend the Doral Academy commencement. I got to give a speech for a couple of minutes, which was really, I appreciated being a part of it, and it was really fun seeing the kids who were graduating. And that was their last graduating class, because they're gonna be focusing on K through eight, so that was their last graduation. But I always love those kind of things. And then I attended the CML spring meeting on Tuesday, and I didn't write any down, anything down, because the mayor was also there, and so I wasn't expecting to get the update, but I always enjoy going to the CML meetings. Oh, and then, oh, I almost forgot. I did send, so last week I brought up Community Cats, and I did send that over on the email that I had, we had received to our city attorney to look at.
Thank you. I got your message, and I shared it with staff.
Okay, awesome. Awesome.
All right, Counselor Carmelia?
Yes, I, along with many of the councilors here, attended the Armed Forces Memorial Ceremony, and that was really moving. And I just love that our city has a special place within our city to celebrate and remember all of our veterans and those who served. And I love that the new statue has a canine, and that was really great. And I want to say on record, you know, for those who might not know, I also love that our city has a place to commemorate and put names on bricks within Westminster. If anyone wants to have names as a veteran, you can send that to our rec and library, and we'll make it happen, which is really neat. So that was really moving. And I had a pretty busy coffee chat this Saturday morning, and so if, again, for those who want to talk to me, just come every first and third. I've had to clarify, instead of every other, it's which one, right? So first and third Saturdays of the month, nine thirty is always. One of those discussions was from a resident, and they gave me a specific location that I need to look up in my notes, but they are interested in a community garden, and they are willing to be someone who helps manage that community garden. And we were talking about what the cost might look like. I think that, I think that we could do this for something that's pretty affordable for the city if we do it right. And so I'd love to pursue looking into that, what, what doing a community garden could look like. And so I'll send an email and expand on that question, but there was a specific location, and I think it's a great way, especially to get maybe high schoolers involved, et cetera, so, in gardening. And, and there was another question that came up around parks fees that I sent over to you. And so I wanted to clarify as a follow-up to that email on our, what we charge schools for our, for using our parks, our public parks. Was the number we got, was that the total for the whole city for last year?
It was.
Wow. Okay. I just wanted to clarify that question, and I will follow up if there's further questions, but for now, we're gonna leave that there. And that's everything. Thank you.
Just a follow-up to our community garden. I think there, do we, we have a couple of community gardens already in our city?
We do, yes.
I know there's one out by the hospital, by me.
Okay.
And there's another one.
Irving Street.
Okay.
That's, I did not realize. Can I get those locations?
Yes.
I guess what it takes to be a member or a user, how that works. Thank you.
So I went to the memorial for fallen police officers on Wednesday, which was a great service, and also is, it was comforting to hear that we haven't heard, had any officers die in Westminster, and hopefully, we pray that that continues. I attended the Armed Forces Memorial, which I am blessed to have that opportunity. I thought that was great. This morning, I was on the Chamber of Commerce YouTube channel or Facebook, so I'm not encouraging you to listen, I'm just telling you about it. That's it.
Counselor Jemont?
So I attended the Police Week Memorial Ceremony, and that was fantastic weather for once. And it seems like we're either winded out or rained out, so it was a beautiful day, great ceremony, special permits and licensing. They had three different special events licenses that went through them. I had my policy in Pilsner, had two tables full of people, mostly about the dog park, all for keeping the dog park primarily as is, so good conversation, like, the biggest crowd I've had in a while, which was great. The mayor and I had, kept us busy chatting with folks. Then I attended the Armed Forces Ceremony. That was great. I did have an ask about that specific thing, because I often hear people don't realize that we do that or that we have that. So I'd be curious, as a follow-up, if we could find out what it would cost to do, like a postcard specifically for that.
Something that's mailed out?
Yeah, because I would like to make sure that, two things. One, people still know that you can buy bricks to honor their loved ones who were in the service, but two, really to get our, our veterans out there. As much of an honor as it is and great as it is, you know, this is the sixth time I've done it, and I was disappointed with the attendance. And I don't think it's because people don't honor. I think that, you know, we've had a lot of turnover in the city, and, you know, I meet veterans who don't realize that we have that. So it would be great if they know that that would be a day that they could come out and be honored. So I would appreciate that follow-up. And then the last thing, I did talk to the mayor. She asked me if I would give an update. She is doing good, so obviously she couldn't be here tonight. Her health had some complications over the weekend, but she's in, in a good place now. They're taking care of her. She did try to get to come tonight, and they told her no. So tonight is a forced night off her. She even offered to have her husband bring her laptop to the hospital, and they said, no, you will be off tonight. So she gives everybody her best.
Thank you. Okay, so last week was a busy week for me, too. I attended on Wednesday the Denver Regional Council of Government, and I just had a few things that I wanted to share with folks. One thing is, if you're interested in doing, learning more about development and planning, ULI, Urban Land Institute, is working with Metro Mayor's to host an urban plan workshop, and that's on July twenty-sixth. So shoot me a note if you're interested, and I'll get you to the right folks, so that you can be a part of that. Let's see, there is a Dr. Cog celebration on August twenty-eighth, in case people are interested in attending that. They have an award ceremony on an annual basis. There is a Bike to Work Day. Again, I'm just shooting that out for folks. It's June twenty-sixth. And so I know Westy is already part of, I think Westminster does that every year?
Yes.
As a sponsor. One thing that I do want to point out, with the legislative session this year and the budgeting, I just want to remind everybody that our AAA has lost about five million dollars in funding for our seniors in the state. And so that's pretty significant, going from eighteen million to thirteen million, and they're really having to cut services. So as we think about where some of our budget might be aligned with, you know, for example, our, if we have grants or things like that, to be thinking about, how might that be able to assist with that gap that's statewide, and that is gonna be hitting our seniors in the city? Yes, Councilor?
I don't know if you all saw the Uber thing I sent out, that Uber is gonna start taking care of the elderly and take Medicaid, Medicare. So that might be an option for seniors.
Yes, and I think that we should, as we, since we did want to look at VIA transit, and again, that's for the disabled, and then Uber, I guess Lyft already does, RTD's, I forget, Lyft and Uber, they can help folks who don't have the higher need. So if we could look at that whole spectrum of how those folks are getting around the city.
That's for seniors, too. The VIA is for seniors also.
It's for disabled, and, yeah, so it could be anybody, like seniors with oxygen or can't, who aren't as mobile.
But not just disabled, if you're seniors, they do it for seniors, too?
I believe so, but I don't know. I think that would be helpful to kind of know what the limits of VIA are. And let's see, the other thing is that Dr. Cog is going to be starting the Active Transportation Plan, which integrates just all modes of transportation, and I'm hoping that our senior transportation mobility planner, Chris, can tap into them. So I'll send you an email with the contact for Dr. Cog. The other thing that, sorry, a lot of things came up. So RTD also presented on their completion of the FastTrucks, and so with SB, is it two thirty, the one that is pulling money from oil and gas?
I know, but don't you have them all, like, in your...
The, the oil and gas tax that, or, I don't know how we're sizing that, but that money is going to be prioritized for the FastTrack through the Northwest Rail Line, as well as the N-line going into Thornton. And the conversation was about, well, what are you actually completing? And Broomfield brought up that there are, originally, there were supposed to be fifty-five trains a day going along the US Thirty-Six Corridor, in the original vision for our Northwest Rail Line as a light rail line. And right now, the Peak Rail Service, which is a pilot service, would have three trains down to Denver, three, in the morning, three trains up to Longmont, so going from fifty-five to six. And the question is really about, what are you actually completing with the dollars that are coming from this? The timeframe is still a little nebulous as well. They're trying to complete it by twenty thirty-five, but what are they, again, what are they completing? And then I did ask about the direction, to make sure that if it's a pilot service, pilot services are startup services that are supposed to show ridership, and that ridership is supposed to prove out further investment. And so if their direction is wrong, because they're only going one direction in the morning, one direction back, that could impact the viability of future funding. So again, I hope that's something that Chris Trevan can help advocate for the city in terms of asking for that, the analysis to be conducted. They have not, and they said it in the meeting, they have not conducted an updated analysis on where that ridership in the direction should actually go. So I'm passing that on to our folks to advocate. Thanks for indulging me on that. One additional thing, and maybe this can go on our website, but we do, Dr. Cog was also advertising the fact that they have services for caregivers, and we have a lot of caregivers in our community, the unsung heroes of helping. And so if we can, I'm gonna pass it on to you, but that'd be helpful to kind of share around on our social media. And then the other, what was it? Thursday, I attended a Front Range Rail meeting, and they, they focus on Amtrak service being a potential operator for that Front Range Rail. So that was interesting. And then, again, I just want to thank staff for a wonderful Memorial Day event on Saturday. Okay, City Manager's Report?
Sure. Next slide, please. Mayor Frotem, councilors, ladies and gentlemen that are in attendance, anybody who might be watching online. Real quick, just a good news story for the city, expanding the urban tree canopy. So reported several months ago that the city had received a two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-dollar federal grant to expand the city's urban tree canopy. We've, starting to reach out to residents in those areas of the city that aren't as densely forested as, as they should be. And so they notified them that they're eligible for free trees to be planted in their, in the right-of-way, not in their yard, not on private property, but in the city-owned right-of-way, and we would start that in autumn of this year. And so we've got five hundred trees that that money will buy. And so, again, focusing on those areas of the city that are disproportionately impacted with low tree canopy. So a good news story there. Next slide. Westy wins the First Green Field Trip. So great news story about our Gulf Westminster team. They hosted folks from Westminster Public Schools this past Tuesday for a field trip, and this is, First Green is a National Golf Course Superintendent's Association of America program, and it pairs up golf courses and local schools for some STEM learning opportunities. And so two classes out of the fourth and fifth grade from Sunset Elementary School visited our golf course at Walnut Creek, and, you know, they set up educational stations tailored to the students from a STEM perspective, and showcasing some economic, recreational, and environmental benefits that golf courses provided the community. So certainly a Westminster win, and some great photos on the right of our golf course, folks interacting with the students. Next slide. Some things to know. So this Wednesday night, from six to nine PM at the MAC, is the Municipal Courthouse Project Open House, and that's community feedback on what that is gonna look like, and take, take feedback from the community. We've got the Historic Landmark Board also Wednesday from six to seven-thirty PM, and that's here at City Hall in the PRL Conference Room B downstairs. This Thursday night, Uplands Quarterly Construction Update, that's at Crown Point Academy from five-thirty to six-thirty PM. Again, this Thursday, and that's a great step forward in kind of community relations and that development. And I've been to every one of those so far, and they've been very informative and productive. So anybody who wants to get an update on Uplands, that's a great forum to do that. A reminder for Memorial Day this coming Monday, city administrative offices will be closed. Planning Commission Meeting next Monday, no public hearing, it's just information. So that goes Tuesday, the twenty-eighth, five-thirty to eight PM downstairs in our multipurpose room. Environmental Advisory Board goes next Wednesday, six-thirty to eight PM upstairs in the CMO Conference Room. And then our next city council meeting, it's actually a study session, is June third here at six-thirty. Please... at 6:30. Please note, because of Memorial Day, there's no meeting next Monday night. Next slide. No information, only items this evening. Next slide. And as always, encourage folks to reach out and talk to us. You can call us at, into my office, 303-658-2006. You can email me directly, mfritag@westminsterco.gov. And you know, we encourage you to contact us and stay connected with us on social media so you can like us on Facebook, follow us on X, check us out on Instagram, or ring our bell at Nextdoor. If any questions, that's all I have this evening.
Anybody have questions for Mr. Freitem? Councilor Carmelia?
Just a quick follow-up to the Environmental Advisory Board meeting is, just for awareness, is that that first regional summit we held two months ago that was so successful here, Broomfield offered to host the upcoming one, and they have scheduled that for the next, I forget the actual date, but it's in another two or three weeks. And so I'll be attending that, and this is more for an FYI for city staff and councilors of the Front Range. But that's really exciting that it's continuing the cadence already, and I actually had outreach from Denver, who missed the first one, that they'd like to be involved. So lots moving there.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, we have three presentations this evening, so we can start off with Jefferson County.
Ms. Lunt, do you want to invite up our public health folks from Jeffco?
Yes, me, okay. That's me. Hello. Do you need a break? We good? Real quick, are we all good? How do I, I'll just do it, I get to do it. Okay, great, thank you. Hi, I am Dr. Sarah Story, I'm the Executive Director of the Jefferson County Public Health Department. I have been on the job now just short of nine months, so there's a lot of newness happening here. I was in attendance at your last, when Dr. Colange came from CDPHG, I was sitting right back there with my colleagues who are here as well. I'm joined by my director, she just got promoted, so it's the first time I've said it publicly, of Policy and Public Affairs, it's Kelly Curl, and she interacts with a lot of our municipalities. So as you know, we're a county health department, which presents some very interesting legal and jurisdictional issues when it comes to threats to our health. We have eight-ish, we just looked it up, incorporated areas, then we have a lot of unincorporated space, and then we have consensus-designated places that are unincorporated. So you can imagine, that's a lot of different folks to interact with and a lot of priorities to balance. But I'm really grateful that you asked me to come and talk a little bit about what we do, because you are the first city council since I've been on the job to invite me to come to a study session. Those are some of my favorite places to be. My previous role was with a city, so I have a soft spot in my heart for city government. I'm not a medical doctor, I am a doctor, but I'm a PhD in Policy and Economics, so please don't ask me to diagnose anything. My family still tries to do that, they still don't know what I do for a living. But I do have a Masters in Public Health, which is one of the requirements for being an Executive Director. We do have a Chief Medical Officer Team as well. Denver Health, Public Health Institute at Denver Health is actually our Chief Medical Officer, so we work very closely with them, as well as with Adams and all of the surrounding counties. Lucky you, you get a couple counties in one city. My last city I worked in, we were four counties, four counties in one city, which is, was also very fun. I thought this would be a really good opportunity, just to, you know, I listened to the last study session and your interaction with CDPHG, and I thought this would be a good opportunity to remind ourselves what a county health department does and what they don't do, where we get our information and how we make decisions. And then I wanted to highlight a couple high priority programs that are very impactful, that I think your community will be very interested in, that are open to all Jefferson County residents. So who we are, we are the people who monitor health. And so we receive information from all these different sources, and then we make decisions about policies. So those can be county policies, actual county regulatory policies. We work very closely with our commission and our county manager. I report to the Board of Health, so I am an island in myself a little bit, so my bosses are a five-person Board of Health, though I always say that county manager and the commissioners are my actual bosses, don't tell the Board of Health that. Our job is to assure the conditions where everyone can thrive. So that does not mean medical care. So health is not owned by the healthcare system, 80% of your health is determined by things that happen outside of the doctor's office and outside of genetics. So those are going to be all the social and economic conditions around which you make decisions. Everything from dog parks, so I want to go on the record as saying you should have the dogs come to the study session, that's what I told Kelly back there, I thought that would be quite exciting. All the way to jobs, right? So you're going to see that our county health improvement plan, which is part of your plan as well, I would hope, we did survey many residents from across the county to look at health priorities, you're not going to see diabetes as a health priority, you're not going to see, you know, flu, or thank goodness, COVID, right? You're going to see conditional opportunities for us to make some changes. So my kids always make, I'm an elder millennial, so there's always going to be one emoji, if I'm not having, if I don't have to be in front of Congress, you're going to get my actual design slides. So I bring this up because I think it's important to recognize the relationship between the county and the state. Every physician, every lab, every clinic, public health clinic, FQHC, when they see a report of a mandatorily reportable condition, they report that to the state. The state then takes that data, cleans it, gives it to us. So there's always a little bit of a lag, right, between the data that the state is getting and what we're getting. So we're trying to make decisions on the best available data. Sometimes it's going to be stories. Sometimes it's going to be actually sitting down with residents and hearing how they are navigating their lives. Sometimes that will be data, and sometimes it's going to be academic research. We don't go give the services every time we see a problem, that would be impossible. We're 170 FTE on a good day for a county this size, that's, we don't have the capacity to just go start a program every time. So we're going to do a lot of policy development. Policy is really kind of the mainstay of public health. You think all the way from what that cup is made out of, not poison, thank goodness, to wearing the seatbelt, wearing a helmet. These are the laws that surround us every day, and it is quite invisible, right, it's an invisible shield, we like to say. We also do a lot of partnerships in support of CBOs, resident groups, as well as our fellow agencies we work very closely with. So these are the Community Health Improvement Plan priorities, the CHIP, as we call it for short, I did forward it along, it's available on our website. This is going to be, these are the big three priority areas that, in our opinion, are the biggest threats to health in Jefferson County. All of these have an equity angle, and when I say equity, it means there are certain parts of this county, in Westminster included, there are pockets of poverty, there are pockets of need, and they're often correlated with racial and ethnic identification, or another layer of identification that is very othering, right? Even in a county, and I moved here nine months, I literally moved here after I started the job, I was commuting by plane back and forth. I took this job because there are hidden challenges in this county that are often kind of waved away by others. They would say, oh, you're going to such an affluent place from Kansas City, Missouri, or Oakland, California, two places that I worked in prior, this is going to be cakewalk. And it wasn't until you start digging in and you see that there are some parts of our county where the poverty rates are as bad as Appalachian region. We have folks up in the mountains who are disconnected from modern plumbing. And then we have people in the neighborhood I live in personally in Southern Jeffco who are paying 80% of their income on their rent, and they are considered some of the most affluent people in the county. So that is really what brought me here, and you can see that reflected in the priorities. Mental and behavioral health was obviously number one. Equitable access to behavioral health care, especially with substance use and supporting persons who use drugs, and I'll talk a little bit about our programs on that. Suicide prevention, this county has an inordinately high suicide rate from where we should be on paper. And when I say should be, I mean the model would predict we'd be doing better than we actually are. Economic stability, we've expanded beyond things like food security, which is always going to be important, we have really strong networks. But we're noticing in our conversations with people, it's not just about hunger, it's actually about keeping lights on, keeping the water running, daycare costs, like just what it takes to survive in this county, like the reality of that is actually, is very troubling. And then climate change, air and water quality, which I know are very important to you, as I've listened to a lot of the conversations you've had before, really thinking about equitable adaptation to changing climate, that is really kind of the angle that we're interested in taking. On the, on that little map there, it's just an example of some of the insights I like to look into before I come into a city. This is diagnosed depression among adults by Census Track in Westminster. Now, not all of that's going to be in my county, but I'll give Adams a little bit of extra free data. You're going to see pockets in Westminster, we're over 24.4% of adults have been diagnosed with depression, which means that the actual prevalence of that condition is probably much higher. So if this were the case, and it is, what would the public health department do? We could make a big report, we could do a bunch of media push, we could work with you to do some awareness, we could deploy our own services. We don't do behavioral health outreach outside of our normal clinical care, but we could try to figure out a partner to do that. Or, and, we could organize testimony for behavioral health funding. Really, it's our job as a public health department to decide how we decide what we're going to do. A lot of that's going to be resource constraints, but a lot of it's going to be redundancies. There are already people doing it, what can we do to strengthen them? Or it's going to be a legal barrier. We have no jurisdiction over that, and you might hear me say that, you might hear the county manager say that about certain issues. I would if I could, I really can't, because there are some pretty strict guidelines around what we can do as a public health department and what we can't. We find we had a very successful legislative session, and that is where I usually push, and I know that's part of the reason they hired me for this job. Another example is syphilis. So syphilis, the county has the unfortunate distinction of being one of the highest counties for the increase in syphilis, which has been 500% in the last less than 10 years, eight years, 500% increase. And what we're seeing is syphilis caught in later and later stages, which means that Jeffco residents, including folks here, have been sitting with syphilis for a decade, never to be detected, and now they're dying from it. And it's an emergency, it's a public health order, it was actually given by the governor. That means we're going to pull full stop, we're going to do everything we can in those three different buckets, because we've activated a response that's based on an emergency. I want to do a couple more programs that you're going to be interested in, these are really, I think, really powerful opportunities for us to work together. We really do focus on like the family unit, however that is defined, and we are very focused on birthing people. The Family Connects Program is absolutely amazing. So this means that every baby born to a Jeffco resident, so a Jeffco baby, is eligible for a free nurse home visit, no income restrictions, no other risk assessment. Literally, you give birth, you're a Jeffco resident, we can show up and support you in your own home, even if it's not your first baby. This is evidence-based program, we're a pilot nationally, so it is really important that we're trying to increase uptake. We are getting a ton of referrals from Denver Health, we're really trying to work on getting more referrals from our main birthing hospital, which is Lutheran, but you know, they've had a lot of leadership change, and so now we have a good city leadership, working together to get more families enrolled. It is a huge help to people, to have someone in their home who understands what they're going through, who can look for signs, not just for baby's health, but for the birthing partner's health, as well as the non-birthing partner, who is often going through. So this is like really treating the whole family unit. We also, we run the WIC program for the county, which is supplemental nutrition for pregnant women, babies, and children under five. So that food package is undergoing a huge change federally soon, and it's going to be more fruits and vegetables, more really nutritionally done, really good food. So we think that the uptake in Jefferson County is very low. We know there are more eligible people, and we would love to partner to see how we could get more eligible Westminster residents enrolled in WIC. We have an Arvada location, we have a Wheat Ridge location, so we can make it as convenient as possible. We also do telehealth visits as well for WIC, which means folks can get their benefits without physically having to come into the office after the first visit. We are the inspectors, that's, everyone always, once the people see your badge, and you work for the health department, you go into a restaurant, you know, they get very concerned, but I like to think of us as business support. So we, we inspect every food retailer, we also do childcare, swimming pools, and what keeps us very busy, wastewater systems, onsite wastewater. I've had to learn a lot about sewage in this job, that wasn't something we dealt with in Kansas City, or Oakland was onsite sewage systems, but now I'm an expert. So the food inspection is usually what gets the most, you know, publicity, I think, but we have a very good relationship, good working relationships with our retail owners. And I always say, and our environmental health director always says, it's our job to support them to have a thriving business, not to shut them down. So that's our goal, to be proactive. We are risk-based, meaning not every restaurant is inspected X time of year, we actually use like risk models so that we don't need as many people on the ground, and we're able to get at the, the retail establishments who have kind of like documented like patterns that we're able to try to like interrupt those patterns, and we're not just randomly showing up trying to gotcha restaurants. So that's a huge part of what we do. And then lastly, we do have clinical services. Those clinical services are really focused on sexual health, so we focus on infectious diseases. We do not do primary care, that's important to drive home. We send folks to our partners, usually it's Dried Health, or Denver Health does a fair amount of primary care. But we really focus on those high-risk situations. Hepatitis C and HIV are main public health charges, and we do that through harm reduction, which could look like needle exchange, which you may have heard of before, we operate that all over the county. But it's going to be even childhood vaccinations, so back to school, it's our biggest time, right, back to school. And we do, we have a new mobile clinic, which is coming soon, and we're actually looking for opportunities to partner for your summer events, if there are certain events that you have where you think it would be great for an open house for this completely mobile clinic, where now, because of law changes, we can actually treat, not just test for conditions. We'd be happy to explore those opportunities, it's quite gorgeous, and we're very, very lucky to have gotten a grant to get this clinic on the ground, because we have a big county, lots of challenges. So this is one of our small baby steps in meeting. So there is my direct contact info, that is my email, but those links are going to go to our county LinkedIn, Instagram, Facebook, we're no longer on X, sorry, and then the county does have a Nextdoor, but we're still lobbying to get our own, so we'll see if that happens. But you can find us there, and as always, you can just email me directly. I like to give you a vintage public health campaign, we do a ton of public health campaigns, and we would love for you to follow us on these channels and amplify the good work that we're doing. And we'll do, we'll do the same for you. So that being said, I will stop there and open it up for any questions about anything that may be on your mind, before I pass it off to my colleagues at Adams County. Yes. Oh, I don't know, do I call on you, or does someone else call on you? I will? Yeah, I'll turn around. Okay. Councilor Carmelia?
A little bit more information on the mobile clinic, so what all can it treat? And what all can it, does it do vaccinations?
We can, yep, we can do vaccinations, we can do, we can actually do full vaccination setups without the mobile clinic, we do that often. So an example is, there was a school in Edgewater who was getting a ton of newcomer families who had not been vaccinated against chickenpox. And so they were seeing some outbreaks there in chickenpox and whooping cough, and so we were able to stand up. Mobile vaccinations, just like during COVID with mass vaccination sites, we can do smaller ones for very targeted opportunities. So definitely reach out if there's something in particular that you're wanting to focus on for the summer months coming up.
Okay, so it sounds like the mobile clinic doesn't necessarily offer the same thing every time, it's up to us to decide what it is that we want to see.
It's a blank slate, so another example, syphilis. So we'll be going to a couple Pride events this summer and doing rapid testing for syphilis, because really, right now, one of the main priorities is to test as many people as possible. And so that makes it really easy. We do a fair amount of street outreach, especially in our persons who use drugs, especially those who inject and smoke drugs. We do a lot of outreach, we see the same people all the time. Now with this, we can do very minimal wound care, but we can also do dispensing of antibiotics and treatment for sexual health. Yeah, thank you. Councilor Studding?
First of all, thank you so much. This was a, I'm not sure how often you get complimented on your slides, but fantastic sort of slides.
Yeah, thank you. They let me go off-brand.
You see a lot of slides.
Yeah.
This was just nice to follow. Related to, yeah, and thank you for your service and all the things that you do, actually, really important stuff for our city. One of the things that you mentioned was, we One of the things that you mentioned was we have over twenty-four percent diagnosed with depression. What are some of the outcomes, so you had that slide with the in- inputs and outputs? What are some of the programs or policy suggestions that you're fighting for to help with the mental health related to depression?
Yeah, it's, that's a really hard one, because we are not a behavioral health provider. So, we are a resource connector, we have community health workers, we have community health navigators. But this is one of the trickiest wicked problems for public health departments because we don't, and Adams County actually is a very different approach to, to what we're doing. Um, we are looking to actually invest in our own behavioral health provider that would do ride-alongs with our street medicine team. That's a very small proportion, that might not even be captured in this data. Where we go is even further upstream, and we're looking at what are the root causes of depression. And we're trying to understand how we could play a part, and I go back to economic stability often. One, it's like a big pet issue for me personally in my family upbringing. But when we look at the types of folks who are being diagnosed with depression, they are upper middle class. When we look at the suicide, like when we look at suicide case and like do fatality reviews, there's a lot of folks that if you just looked at their biography, you'd think they have everything going for them, what is happening? There's some stress happening in households that we wanna understand more. When I think of public health, the reason I came back to public health, I left the field for six years, I worked in the private sector and came back because I thought, what does public health do that nobody else does? And I think understanding how households react to stress is uniquely a public health issue, but it's a long-term, it's a generational impact issue. Um, and then, of course, beyond that, and I think Kelly is still here, yes. Um, we advocated um, with the legislature this, this session for a lot of the bu- behavioral health support kind of policies, which wouldn't directly benefit us. Like, we wouldn't get a bunch of money from that, but we knew it's important because it makes our job harder to do when behavioral health is just wild and untreated. Um, so it's, it's tricky, it's a puzzle, and it's what we go to bed thinking about. But, you know, you know as well as I, there's no quick fix for that one. We will not treat our way out of this, like, that's, that's not possible.
So one of the things that we did here, this was back in February, so I moderated a panel of mental health and substance abuse experts that came over, and we just talked about various causes and effects and what we can do as a city to help the situation. If you had a, at the top of your wishlist, in terms of how you can work with Westminster, what's the number one thing you would want us to jump on to help you guys?
We have an amazing team that does technical assistance and training for providers, law enforcement, anyone who's might be interacting with folks who have mental health conditions, mental illness, de-stigmatization and de-escalation, like, that is the team, they're, they have lived experience in, in the field. They work every day with folks who are um, struggling with substance use disorder. That would be the first thing I would do, because then we expand our army of compassionate caregivers, because we can't be everywhere. We noticed that a lot of like the violence that happens surrounding mental health is happening because there's this escalation of emotion and behaviors, and no one knows how to react. And it's, it's a very um, dangerous time right now for, for us to do our work in some of the municipalities when it comes to trying to like prevent further harm from happening. And I would hope that, like, moving forward, Westminster could be one of our like progressive allies in that, and I'd love to explore more about what that would look like, so we could multiply our effect and not, we can't be on every corner, unfortunately. Unless you would like to buy ten more vans, it will be very difficult.
Um, final question.
Sure.
Related to the WIC program. Uh, how much, it, so, we hear the county's going through some budget issues.
Yes.
How is that impacting programs like the WIC program and these other things, or isn't that?
It, it is, it's, we're all, yeah, it's going to be, it's going to be double hard on public health, and I'll tell you why, because the county, you know, everyone's facing this, we knew it was coming, you know, we weren't gonna get COVID funding forever, once COVID was kind of behind us in a way. So the county reduction, right, we all have a part to play in meeting our target reductions. But the public health department's unique because we also got funded directly, and so now we're getting hit at the county revenue le- like level and our own level, so if you're wondering, if you love numbers, we're about a third funded by county general funds, right, so that's part of the hit. We're a third funded by fees, so that's gonna be fees for retail licenses, we don't charge for like clinical services, but unless you come to get a vaccine, we're opening a travel vaccine clinic eventually. Um, that will be fee for service, but our fees are mostly from our environmental inspections, and then we're a third grants. And you can imagine that grantors are also contracting as well, so it's like you get that triple hit. WIC is actually not fully funded by federal and state dollars, even though it is a federal and state program, so we kick in some extra money. So those are the types of things, to the tune of six hundred thousand dollars a year, we kick enough county general funds that we will have to contract, which means we'll lose educators, and that, those are the folks who actually sign people up for benefits. And our, our wait, our waiting times will be longer, you know, our caseloads will be higher. But every program's gonna have to sacrifice, and WIC is unfortunately one of our largest programs. Environmental inspection for air and water quality is also one of those programs that we invest quite a bit of money, and that's one we'll have to look at contracting as well. But I'm hoping, knock on granite, that through some natural attrition and retirements and freezing some vacancies, we should be able to maintain as close to level as possible moving into twenty twenty-five, that's my hope, anyway.
Oh, so six hundred thousand for the reduction?
If we had to, that, that's worst-case scenario, worst-case scenario is that the budget for that particular program, and that staff knows this, would be halved. Because it is one of our larger, like, we, you can't nickel and dime your way, the commissioners have heard me say, the county managers, you can't nickel and dime your way out of a budget crisis, I don't wanna say crisis, a budget challenge, because eighty-five percent of our budget is personnel. So, we don't, we're not out here flying places and buying shit, we bought that van with a grant. We don't spend money outside of people, you can come to our building and tour it, and you'll be like, oh yeah, they're living quite lean. Uh, but we do, we do support and compensate our employees very fairly, we are one of the, um, I s- I, I think the best compensated health departments in the state. Uh, when we attract high-quality people and high-quality applicants, we opened um, an environmental inspector position this week. Within twenty-four hours, we had twenty-five people apply, that's absolutely unheard of. So, we're definitely like attracting, we're an employer of choice, um, and I'd like to maintain that um, moving forward, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilor Ireland?
Talking a lot about the airport, so do you test for lead?
We receive, so we actually, um, in those two programs that I brought up, Family Connects and WIC, both of them have lead testing information and connections for babies, so, and, and young children before school age. Um, we receive lead data, like I said, so that all the lead data, lead tests go to the state. The state then reports that data to us, we get that relatively quickly, and I gave another look at it before I came here. We do not see any hotspots in the county of actual elevated blood lead levels in those tests, but there could be two reasons for that, one, it could be that people aren't testing, and we know, based on use of numbers, the take-up rate for young children is quite low in the state, the lowest of any state I've ever worked in. But I also worked in California, I'm from California, where in order to enroll in school, you had to have had a blood, blood lead test. So it's, there's, there's a different population there. So I don't see any heat map that is telling me we have elevated blood lead levels based on those tests. However, if we did get one, we would eventually get pinged with an environmental inspection that we would go to that property and say, hey, we heard this happen, would you like a consultation? And then we will actually test surfaces, we'll test dust, we'll test food tins, right? That's, that's a, as you heard, like, a very big source of lead. But we really do focus on the youngest, because we know we can reverse the effects of lead poisoning in the youngest children. Um, and that is something that's very close to my heart and close to my professional background, I've done a lot of work in blood lead testing. Um, but we don't know until we test, and that is the tricky part about lead.
So we're kind of a low-testing state?
We are a very low-testing state, comparatively speaking, but there's a lot we can do about that. Um, from both a regulatory standpoint, but mostly from a public awareness standpoint. And one of the things I do wanna say, though I wasn't prompted and you didn't ask, is that one of the things we need to be very careful about is like this, almost like a lead panic, because lead is naturally occurring in the environment, but if we're not seeing it in blood, I have no reason to suspect. Right, but I do know that exposure to lead occupationally and then bringing that home is a, is a concern, and is a concern for anyone working in an airport such as this where there is leaded, leaded fuel, flight schools, et cetera, I know that that is a pattern across the country. We're worried about the young children of the families that are working in those facilities, and we can support you in whatever way you need to get extra additional hands-on support. You also have a high insurance rate here, which also is a good thing, you have a lot of insured folks. But a bad thing, when you're trying to actually get things done to the population, because they can go anywhere. And it is a provider education situation, it's a pediatrician outreach situation, much like syphilis actually is about, are the doctors ax- asking you, are they recommending it? Are they using the right talking points to talk about the long-term effects of lead poisoning? You would be shocked how many parents, when I showed up at their door, we did a huge, huge outreach in Kansas City because youth violence was directly connected to lead exposure in early ages. The parents were like, no, thank you, get off my property. Like, so there is this, this anti-government stigma that we're working against that is honestly rightfully earned sometimes, public health hasn't always been great about those things in our, in the history of public health. But we can help with that, we can help with that focus um, on outreach and education that won't scare people. A lot of people don't wanna know. It's shocking to me, like, especially working in sexual health for so long, that there are some people who would rather just not know, and that's a scary thing too, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions?
Um, I, I did have one question, um, the, just following up on Councilor Ireland's question about lead. I was just wondering, the mobile clinic, is that something that can be utilized for lead testing? Since we have such low rates, that CDPHG was just kind of like the doctor, or the physicians here are not doing a great job of um, getting that out there. So what resources could be utilized to increase testing?
It's a tough one, because we don't get reimbursed, like, w- we don't get reimbursed for blood lead testing um, if they're not Medicaid children, so it's tricky. It's out, it is really outside our scope of services, we really try to get folks to do that in the pediatrician or to walk straight into a lab and say, give me a blood lead test. So it's, it's a little fuzzy, and I would have to look into it. I also recognize that there are many children in Jefferson County who are right now walking around with elevated blood lead levels, and they're not in Westminster. And so, again, with those incorporated areas that I'm balancing Lakewood and Edgewater and Wheat Ridge and Arvada and Westminster, I have to look across all of those different jurisdictions and say, where, where is the blood lead level risk? And I do have some analysis on that, that I'm finishing up, which is to look across the entire county for some pockets that we could start with, at least some information campaigns, really simple, do this now, and this is why, that we could start doing, we can't just blanket, we gotta be super-targeted. So, I definitely do wanna keep that conversation going about some other data analysis I've been working on on the side. Where would we start if we wanted to do a coordinated outreach campaign? And how would we prioritize across Westminster and across the county? So, more to come on that, but I do have to work with my other health departments too, since we, we all share in this, yeah.
Counselor, um, Matt?
Um, on the no, testing, so you do basically low-income folks that don't have insurance? The county will do, did I understand that right?
We will test anyone, we can bill insurance, but only for a limited set of services that are public health ordered services.
So, and the reason I ask is, um, certainly it's something that the community has voiced concern about. And so I guess one of the things that I feel like we could do a good job at, or better job at, is educating people. Like, if you are concerned, here's how you would go about being tested.
Yes.
Um, aside from just going to your pediatrician, but even letting people know that that's an option for them. Um, maybe that's something that we could work with the health department and staff to just put that out there um, on our channels to say, hey, if this is a concern of yours, here's how you go and address it.
Right, if you don't have insurance, here's the step you can take, if you do have Medicaid, Medicare, here's how, you know, like, there are at, there are also at-home blood lead level testing kits that are app-based, that you can order straight to your home. There's lots of different options for this, the most important thing is understanding, I think for the, the public to understand that that data all gets centralized in one place. So the more data we have, the better opportunity we have to pick up on patterns that may be surrounding sources of interest, right? And so, I am not an expert on airborne lead particles, no, I mean, like, I can read a research paper. I am, I think, an expert on blood lead levels, like, in public health, you kinda have to be. And, and so I would say that if we were to do a coordinated push, because of the ability to prevent further harm, I really would push that we focus on the youngest residents, and the parents of the youngest residents, to help educate them on why it's so important. Um, and then bring those services, I would love to see a partnership with pediatric, like, is there some one-day lead apalooza? I don't know, like, one day where we could get it, because it is scary for people to, like, often you have to get the veins. I remember my little babies having to get their little two-year-old veins poked, it's not fun. And it takes a little more, I think that's part of the mobile clinic, it isn't just a finger prick, often with the little ones, we have to do like a full IV. So it's a little more all-encompassing than just a, a quick one, even than a mouth swab for sexual health stuff. Swabs are a little easier than like a full phlebotomy setup, so, um, but I, I definitely look forward to getting more data under our belts, all of us.
Yeah, and I think another thing that was very helpful you brought up is just being uh, forward about the fact that it is naturally occurring. Not that you still shouldn't be careful, but just the education piece, I appreciate um, you talking through that.
Senator Zadi, and then Councilor.
Just to follow up on that. So, if we were to coordinate with you on this education campaign that's targeted for zero to five, right? Um, couldn't we then, couldn't we start geographically in the area around the airport and expand out?
I do have some, and I'll, I'll follow up with all of you, but I do have some interesting map layers. I worked in map technology for a long time, so my staff, they hated it because then I go make my own maps, you know, like, don't ask them for their help. But I do it to soo- it's soothing, it's like a hobby. So I did a layer map where I layered on a radius around the airport um, of concern, right? Which would be like one point five K or one K, three K, I kind of went out, and I found the pockets where we're most likely to have children under five. And then also neighborhoods where the building age was also at that point of concern, right, before nineteen seventy-five or something. We could layer and actually prioritize that way, at least it's a start, right, that we have like a four-block, four-square block radius, where you say, okay, let's start here. I would hate, though, to go in and be like, your kid may have lead, you know, like, but it really is just about that, it's their personal choice, right? But it's the encouragement of that and making it as easy as possible. That's where I think we'll have to do a little more problem-solving together with some other partners to say, okay, but like, how do we make it easy? Because if it were that easy, they already would have done it, and something is missing here, why is this so difficult, right? Um, we're not, we're not gonna state mandate it, right? We're not gonna mandate it at the city level, like, you wouldn't do that, or the county level, um, that's not the Colorado way, right? So we have to figure out another way of doing it, but I think that would be wise, and I would love to see, because the, I'm having these same conversations with other cities around lead that has nothing to do with an airport. So I actually think we can get some efficiencies, and we have a wonderful communications team. It does overlap with Adams, and so that is something that Adams and I have been talking, the, the director of Adams and I have been talking about, how we could pool some resources there.
And luckily, we, we just prioritized in our strategic plan, an objective that's related to coordinating better with our partner agencies on this issue, right, so it's a perfect time to marry the, the two staffs.
And it doesn't even have, I wouldn't, you know, we're not doing flyers anymore, we're, we have actually some pretty sophisticated like geo-fencing on our social outreach and, and boosted ads and things that we can actually get onto Facebook, Instagram, LinkedIn, based on location. And so, we are pretty savvy when it comes to those things, to get the right message in the right hands, especially because you have a next door, that's actually very useful, because we can actually use that as an information channel as well. Um, so that's, I mean, that's the hope, but if we start small and kind of proof of concept, I think it would be, we would see some data pretty quickly about at least some uptake of tests. We would see some data pretty quickly about at least some uptake of tests and we could run some experiments that way. But I wanna make sure we're not also um instilling a lot of fear because like the fear of, oh, there's lead everywhere in the air. And I'm breathing my poor kid, that it really par- what I've seen in my career, twenty years, I've seen it paralyzes parents. When they are, they are so fearful and it paralyzed it, and then we can't have actual conversations about risks and benefits. Um, because everyone's really scared. And so it's my job to try to allay those fears, but understand the urgency of the situation, so.
And that's why it's great that it's a partnership, you're right, cause you have the expertise in the messaging, the copy a- and all of that that could.
And we have national networks. I mean, every public health department in this, in, from Flint to San Diego to Texas. Like everyone has a different lead challenge from a different lead source, but that messaging is really all the same. Get your child tested now. Like the message doesn't change even when the source is different. So we could be sitting here not talking about an airport at all and talking about tinned goods. And we would still be having the same situation, low uptake, we don't have a lot of data to make decisions, we need more data. And that's in the hands of people, so I think we can do it. I hope we're sitting here in a year with our dogs. Talking about how successful we were in this partnership.
Bring the dogs in, that's right.
I just want permission to bring my dog into a city building, but I'll wait on that. She's not.
I don't even know what the rule is about that. I've not been asked that.
Can we bring dogs in here?
We don't have a protocol on dogs. No one would believe, everyone thinks my dog's a canine sniffer and I just let them think that, so that's, that's what I do. Uh, any more questions before I pass it over?
Counselor Ireland, did you have one still?
No, I'm good. Thank you for answering the questions thoroughly.
Counselor Chameleon?
It sounds like just to tie this in a bow that we need to follow up with the county, with our staff to figure out what a partnership might look like. Possible day or event. Uh, and I just wanna add that to the point on the fear around the lead. I don't know exactly what such an event would look like, but my thoughts are seeing as mental health is such a concern. Maybe it's a health day, right? Or something like that where we also have resources around mental health. And then we have maybe the mobile clinic for lead testing for a zero to five. I don't, you know, I feel like we could expand on this. We have health experts, but maybe something that gets more than one thing happening so that, you know, there's not a. You know, we're just saying, hey, this is what we're providing, here's where to go and getting some information out about that.
Yeah, I agree. And I don't think people fully comprehend the long-term implications of environmental lead exposure. In their homes, in their toys, in all of these things, like it's scary stuff, right? And so when we're talking, and this is not any, uh, this is not me judging the discussion on the airport at all. But when, it's almost like we have this conversation about the airport, but we're like forgetting that half our homes were built in a time when lead paint was still okay. And we've got kids eating paint chips, like, you know, that that's the scary thing, right? Even, and I'll bring it up again, dogs eating paint off the walls. Like if, I've talked to many veterinarians who are like, they see lead poisoning in animals. Because, because the dogs are chewing on the baseboards and the baseboards are full of lead. And so I don't want us, I want us to stay focused on the issue at hand. Of course, the airport is a really important issue, but also allowing families to understand the full scope of the risk. And to re- remove that risk from their homes. They can test their paint easier than they can test their kids too. So those are kits that we actually can procure and and send, just like Radon, we have Radon kits that we send. Little paint testers would be also another option for us too.
And that's really good to know too. So maybe if whatever this event looks like, has a booth from the county there to, you know. That answers all of the things that the county provides informationally. It sounds like if our, if our staff could follow up with the county, it sounds like you might need some conversations with Adams County first. We might have to wait for that.
We can all get together. At least I see them all the time. We were on a text basis, so. We all kind of, a lot of new directors started at the same time after COVID, so we have a nice little club. Um, and we were actually just bringing on a new outreach coordinator who will be responsible for like interacting with the municipalities to like. Make sure that we're distributed where we need to be. So if you follow up with me, um, I will connect you to the right person. And whoever needs to do the organizing.
Right, yeah, thank you so much.
Of course.
Counselor Ireland?
Can we just have this part of the Westie Fair because people are already there? And then it doesn't seem like it's like panic, you know, it's just part of that. There's a health area.
We could also do some very basic data collection, like because we're a public health department, we don't go through the same academic IRBs. As, you know, a peer-reviewed article. If we wanted to just do something very simple, we talked, we do a lot of talking, you can tell. A lot of talking, say, oh, can I get your zip code or whatever, some, some identi- so we could at least give you some information back. And like we talked to this many people and this percentage of people had no idea that they should get their kids tested for lead. We can do that without waiting on big state data sets to trickle down two years later.
Well, I like the social media aspect too, cause that's a cheap way to do it. And it's not a panic way to do it, but it could be part of our fair, just.
And it could be like engaging and fun and it, cause we use like communication sciences to decide, you can see, this was a youth-centered campaign, the Peach. You wouldn't believe the reactions we got from high schoolers on this because we tested it with them. This wasn't for their grownups in their lives. This was for them. But we can do that too, and we can do a more coordinated campaign, which would be really great, so.
Yeah, I just wanna say thank you. This was um very informative, so thank you. And and again, your slides are great.
I'm taking that back. I wish I had it, more witnesses.
It's on YouTube.
Oh, every time I get recorded, I get in trouble, so hopefully I didn't say anything.
Thank you very much for having me.
Thank you very much.
Can we take a break before?
Yes, uh, let's take a break. Five minutes.
I've been here about six years. I'm not new to Adams County. I've been here about eleven years. And before my work at the Health Department, I've been at the District Attorney's Office. And so I'm a licensed addiction counselor and have treated people the last twenty years struggling with behavioral health needs. And um have a private practice and my work is really in policy. And so that's how I ended up at the the Health Department. So um, as I said, I'm, I'm gonna go through some of these rather quickly because um Dr. Story really did. Address some of them and there's a lot of overlap in in terms of what Westminster experiences with the two health departments. And so I'll go through our mission and vision just quickly. Our, our purpose here is um. To safeguard and improve our community's health and well-being. I also forgot, before I get going too far, this is Brian Halavasek. He is our Director of Environmental Health, so um really supports clean air and water and land. And we have the landfills out in, in Adams County, and so Brian is an expert in those areas, so um he's here with me tonight too. So these are all the direct services that we provide and there's a lot of them. And so putting them up, it really. so putting them up, it really, it helps people to understand just sort of the scope of public health and, and what all happens. So from file records, um, you heard in Jeff Go, the sexual health and family planning, the nurse home visitation programs, and, um, we have two of those, WIC, of course, harm reduction and, and syringe access, as well as, um, safe smoking access, as well as connection to care, um, and the list goes on. Here are the regulatory and emergency roles. So, health departments have by statute regulatory and emergency roles that we play, and you heard in Jeff Go, the, the inspections, and that's, um, part of Brian's team, who does our retail food inspections and pool and spa, um, solid and hazardous waste, onsite water, industrial hygiene. We also do methamphetamine contamination remediation oversight, and body art facilitation inspection, the school childcare facility inspections. So this gives you a list of just really all that, that a health department does. Of course, we're familiar with pandemic response and infectious disease and outbreak investigation, as well as, um, case investigation and contact tracing, but sometimes it's useful just to sort of see the list, um, and, and sort of look through the different areas, because I think for, for you all, council, is really the, the question of how do we work together and collaborate and, and serve the, the people of Westminster. Public health departments are really designed to be the chief health strategists, and that is just a public health term, to mean that we want to really move the needle for policy work as well as promotion work, and we wanna make sure that we use data-driven decisions. So we, we do want to have the subject matter expertise to be able to tackle the issues that we're all dealing with. Um, you'll see in a moment, our community health improvement plan is virtually identical to Jeff Go's in terms of the priority areas that we have, and so there's a lot of alignment there. But the chief health strategist is, is really the person and the department in, in our cases that sets the, the tone and the standard for how are we gonna engage to create, um, the conditions by which our people can potentially have really safe and thriving lives, and so that's the, the different things up here that we have. Leveraging partnerships is really why we're here, because you wanna be connected to, to community, and so do we, we wanna be connected with you all and, and make, um, meaningful, um, decisions. We've been a health department for seventeen months, and so we opened the doors January first, twenty twenty-three, and we, this is the first time we've been here as our health department, so Tri-County Health, um, obviously you, you know the story there probably, and so the three counties had to create their own health departments, and so seventeen months in, we're still establishing a lot of our cadence and rhythm, and so part of this is making sure we have a cadence with you all to be out here every six to twelve months, or however often you'd want to be, uh, us to be here. So, looking at, um, the partnerships, one of the main ways to think through that is our community health improvement plan. These are statutorily required by our health departments to have every five years, and so these are community-centered plans, um, and as I'm gonna show you in a moment, uh, the, the plans that we went through the process of, you know, broad, um, stakeholdering with collective impact and, and having, um, good community voice that facilitated us resulting in our, our community health improvement plan, and our community health improvement plan, actually doesn't have a slide up here, I apologize, but our three priorities, which I'll link to in a second, are economic security, housing, and access to care. You saw in Jeff Go's, um, all three of those were represented in their, their two sort of graphics that they had, so there's, there's alignment in terms of the two health departments. Strategic priorities and some opportunities for collaboration, our thinking through, um, housing and access to care, as I mentioned, also behavioral and mental health is on all of our minds because of the ways in which behavioral health is disproportionate, proportionately affecting people across our communities and our cities and towns, environmental justice, air quality, food security, tobacco use prevention, and youth engagement. Um, I'll pause here just for a second, because I think one of the things also that's really important is knowing that health departments are actively engaged in schools and school districts, and so our partnership with Westminster Public Schools is, um, a phenomenal one, and we, in a prevention, um, with a prevention mindset, we know that in the lifespan, the way that we prevent certain, um, diseases and behaviors from happening is to really support the connection of young people before they get to a certain age when they otherwise don't have the connections or the supports or the resources that they need, as well as when we think about just, um, the environment, whether it's the, the built environment, or whether that's the air quality and water quality, um, as well as access to care. So, it's important to know that public health is really involved in, in many different aspects of, of community. Here is the link, uh, for our behavioral health assessment plan, which we just completed. Our behavioral health assessment, um, is our Sentinel Assessment in Adams County, where we took American Rescue Plan funding and really decided we needed to know what the lay of the land was in terms of behavioral health, and so we did that, and there's an executive summary, and then our press release, um, and this is literally about a month, um, hot off the press, and, and really what we identified in the behavioral health assessment is our number one priority is workforce development. As you probably have heard, there are not enough, um, behavioral health, um, therapists and workers in general, there's not enough care for people who need, um, to be treated and to be helped, and so we're beyond a crisis with that, and, um, myself being a therapist, I've sort of watched it happen in our state and our nation the last twenty years, and so we're really having to, to be creative about the strategies that we use to help people and, uh, be innovative in that, because there just simply are not enough people to take care of the need. Uh, our second finding and, and sort of area is screening in school and integrated settings, so, um, being able to have integrated into pediatric care, um, and, and primary care, for example, behavioral health screenings and the tools, and there's things called, um, ESPERT is one of them, so being able to have brief interventions at different points in time in people's lives, so that it doesn't take a crisis for them to, to get the help that they need, but rather they get help, um, earlier, hopefully, to prevent something more serious to happen. And then thirdly is improving care coordination. So, somebody trying to navigate the system of, of healthcare, um, is, is daunting, it's difficult, and it takes, um, it takes a lot of time, and for many residents, they simply just don't have the time or the capacity to navigate multiple systems of care and multiple, um, multiple, um, providers at times, and so knowing where to turn, how to, how to get the care that people need is really, um, our third finding there in the behavioral health assessment that, that we have. Additionally, in terms of how do we engage, or, or how could we engage, this is a community engagement request form, and so, um, we get hundreds, um, of these every single, um, year to be involved in community events, to be involved in various, um, outreach activities, schools reach out, um, uh, different cities do reach out. So this is one, just sort of practical way, that if there are ever events that you'd like us to attend, you just click on this, and it's just a simple form that you can fill out and say, you know, here's the event and the date and the number of people, and this is what we think we'd like there, and then one of our staff members will, will reach out to the person whose name's on the contact and, and, uh, and attend that event. Um, and so it's just really a practical way to, to try to engage, uh, directly with community, and so we do hundreds of these events, um, throughout the year. This is also a data request form, and we have a, a pretty extensive data team, and our data team, uh, gets requests throughout the year, and city councils, um, are one, um, one, uh, customer, if you will, that can reach out and request data, and Dr. Story talked about MAPS and, and GIS, and, uh, we have some people on our team that this is, this is really their passion and their expertise, and so really looking at, at heat maps and, and layering, and how do we use maps to tell the story, as well as help you, um, see what the needs are, as well as tell the stories that you're trying to tell, um, as a council. So this is something really practical, that if you'd like to have a, you know, have a map, uh, and have it, um, be really tailored to your needs, that's something that we would be happy to do, and would, would love to, to do that, um, uh, for you. Here, uh, is some of our team, since we haven't been here, we put down, uh, some of our team members. This is Dr. Wydenbach, and then, um, Bernadette, Dr. Albanese is our medical officer, and this is the rest of our leadership team. Epian Data Science is Adam, whom I mentioned, uh, mentioned the work for, um, MAPS, that's on Adam's team, and then we have, um, an entire nursing division, we have almost eighty nursing staff members in our nursing division that, um, handle, uh, various aspects of clinic. Our main clinic is actually in Westminster, off of one hundred and twenty-second in Pecos, so the old Tri-County building, um, we acquired that lease, and so that's our largest clinic, and we have, um, all of our, um, nursing, uh, operations there, as well as our WIC and diabetes, um, programs are also in that same building, as well as harm reduction, so Westminster is a main hub for our health department. Our board, um, uniquely, our board is not made up of any elected officials or, or commissioners, and so in the dissolution of Tri-County Health, um, this is how they, they position, um, our boards, our commissioners appoint our five members to our board, and, um, and then the board appoints and supervises our executive directors, so that's our structure. And, uh, as I said, we opened the doors January first, so, um, these are our members. And that's, that's it. So I'll open it up for questions and, um, and see if I can answer anything and be helpful to you all.
Counselor Rizotti.
Thank you for being here. Um, I will say you do have a former elected, so, close.
Yeah.
On your board. Related to the unhoused, um, what are some programs that, so I know that you're doing a lot, can you let everyone know what kinds of programs that you're looking into getting, uh, focusing on?
Our, our county is really looking at how do we partner with our other departments, so we have a community safety and well-being department, and, um, obviously our, our sheriff's office, and we're really looking at, um, our parks department is the other one, and really looking at how do we meet people where they are, and also, um, in tandem, help with their needs that are present. Um, we will be, um, having, uh, our harm reduction team do a lot of, of work, they've really only been up for the last eight months up and running, and so our harm reduction team does street outreach and, and really tries to meet the unhoused where they are and support them, but it's, it's such a complex issue, as, as you all know, um, one of the innovations that we're doing is, we're really, historically, as Dr. Story mentioned about Jeff Go, and, and we're the same, and health departments in general, have not been in the business of doing, um, behavioral health service delivery, and we are beginning to sort of dip our toe in, in that arena. We will have our first behavioral health clinical intern this summer from Colorado State University, and we are gonna embed that person with our harm reduction team and really start to, um, to try to support people where they're at and, and to help them, and so the answer is really, it's multifaceted, and we have, um, we have a lot of groups who have been convened to really look at the problem i- in a regional way, so that we're not just sort of throwing money or solutions at a problem, and then in five or ten years, we'll be asking ourselves the, you know, the same question, like, what do we do and, and how, how do we help? Um, for us, it's, as a newer health department, it's really making sure that we utilize, um, the other departments in our county, and we're really starting to assess the next steps in terms of, that's, that's why our, one of our priority or areas in our chip is access to care and housing, because, as you all know, if you don't have safe housing, then it's really difficult to take care of your needs and get your needs met, uh, for anything, regardless of what it is, medical, behavioral health, um, taking care of family, um, children, so it's comprehensive, a lot of what we're doing in that space coming up is, is in policy work, and so really, uh, working with, uh, our legislature to, uh, enact change that is meaningful and sort of longer-term solutions towards that. Uh, we could talk about that for a few more hours, but, um, that's sort of my, my brief answer.
So, so I will say that I've heard legendary stories of your data team, and it's only been seventeen months. I don't know, so what is it that you're doing differently in, is it David, is, was that his name?
Adam.
Adam? Uh, what's going on in that? It, I, I hear it's just a lot of innovation happening.
Well, it's legendary because of Adam and the team that he's pulled together, um, but really it has to do with the innovation in terms of allowing us not to be the drivers of the work, but instead listening first to, to council, to residents, to whomever it is, and a customer service-oriented approach. So the reason it's legendary is because random, you know, sort of customers, random meaning it doesn't matter where they come from, and it's not very traditional in terms of who's asking, um, will say, hey, can you pull together this map with this data set and these, you know, factors, and then we do that, and we really want to, one thing that we wanted to be known for is we created a health department, and Dr. Wydenbach created the health department from scratch, literally had a piece of paper and just started, was we wanted to be, um, responsive to our community, and we didn't want to think that we were the experts coming in saying we know the answers, but we really wanted to change that, that dynamic, and first listen and see what the needs are, and then, and then meet those needs, and so that's why it's innovative, because a lot of times, health departments have been around for decades, and anytime we have anything, whether it's a city council, or, I mean, councils are a little different, 'cause you get, you get new people in here, but you know what I mean, you know, you get something that's going for twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years, and sometimes it's difficult to change or be innovative, or, um, or take a new approach, and so as a new health department, we've been able to do that in every division and every area and ask sort of the why, you know, well, why do we do this? And, um, and I'm new, and so I've been asked, been able to ask a lot of questions of why, too, and it's been really fascinating, because it's helping us really, um, be able to, to, to really wield the, the resources that we've been entrusted with to serve people and, and to really make sure that we lift up people, so.
I think that makes a lot of sense, and I'll tell you, it's not just health departments, right? But all levels of government. I think once you change that, but once you reverse that formula of thinking, you know, status quo protection ver- towards innovation and change, good things happen. Um, I'll ask you the same question I asked Dr. Story. What, if we, if you had a top wish of how you can work with Westminster, what would it be? What, what program, what can we help with, with your department?
It's a, it's a big question. Um, I think for us, it, it really is knowing what are people telling you all, and, and what are people saying are their biggest needs, their biggest challenges, because I think, I think that when we, when we stop to listen, we hear the same things. Um, for us, when, when we stop to really just listen, I think, I think the, the point is how do we become innovative at delivering the services or the connections that people need, that are, that people are so frustrated with? And many of us, we find ourselves in, you know, having to navigate government or navigate, um, systems, and, and we sort of can put ourselves in, in people's shoes, um, and so I think, you know, that's not answering your question, as well as what I would say is probably looking at prevention efforts, because prevention efforts, we know, sort of dollar for dollar, are gonna provide the, the best outcome in terms of, of, um, return on investment, so really investing in how do we connect kids and young people, um, you know, the, the old story about like, let's go upstream and like figure out why the kids are all like, you know, in the, in the river, uh, wait, let's not wait until they're, they're drowning to figure out like, why are they actually getting in, in the river and build the fence? And build the fence, so again, like I talked about Westminster Public Schools, but. Westminster Public Schools at, when I was at the DA's office was wonderful to work with because they've been very innovative and really trying to, to ask those questions. So, so my, my response would be, are there areas of alignment that are already in works with Westminster where we could. Come alongside and be thought partners, be subject matter experts and and really. That is our role as the chief health strategist is to come along you and, and help you with the work. We aren't going to do all of the heavy lifting because that's not our role, but we certainly are good at convening, we have experts in project management. We have experts in policy and so I think some of that is why this dialogue is so valuable for us is we want to make sure you know what we do. And we want to make sure we know what you do and and work together and sometimes that's taken for granted. You know, oh, we know what the cities do and oh, we know what the health departments do, but really this dialogue is very meaningful, I think.
Awesome, thank you.
Like Carmelia. I guess I have a couple of questions, we heard from Jeffco and I realize the department is very new. But as we heard from Jeffco, they have that mobile clinic, do you offer any direct services such as vaccine, vaccines or testing?
Yeah, we, we offer all of those services at various clinics and and the one here in your city at one hundred and twenty second and Pecos. We have two mobile units and potentially a third coming up. We, we won't know about that for a little while, but yeah, we have two mobile, mobile units that provide the services out in the community at various. Places Adams County geographically, you know, extends very far east and so. Taking care of our, our people in Bennett and Strasburg, i- it poses some different challenges than. Than our, our neighbors and so. Yeah, to answer your question, we have those services.
So potentially we could partner the same way if we reached out to Adams County, especially if we had a coordinated day, a health day. What are some of the services offered, I just want to know if they're the same or different than Jeffco?
They're the same.
Okay.
Yeah, immunization, sexual health. We do, you know, all of the testing and and we do some, some sexual health care. So i- it's, it's very complimentary in terms of what Jeffco is doing. We also do health enrollment, WIC enrollment, things like that and so. It sort of depends on what the specific need is, most of our immunization tends to be the. The immunization unit that goes out, do a lot of, you know, fairs and activities and, you know, carnivals, festivals.
Right, okay. And my first thought was, okay, well, that effort might be redundant, but that's not, that's not necessarily true because. When it comes to direct services that day, then yes, but if somebody wants to enroll, for example, in WIC at the Westy Fest, they would have to go to the right van, right? So anyway. My other question is just around air quality, this has been something that's been on my mind. And I forgot to ask Dr. Story, but what does that look like? The air quality monitoring, you know, do you have sites in each city or what does that program look like?
We have the Love My Air app, I'll let Brian actually talk about that because he's really established it here for us, but if you, if you don't have the Love My Air app. Does, do any of you have it? So we, we need to get you a link so that you can download that, but the Love My Air app will give you real time information. I get my alerts, you know, you can set them to your, to where you live, to where you work and it gives you really a great way to sort of take your, your. Air health, if you will, into your own hands, but Brian, what do you want to add to that?
Sure.
Could you come up to the table so the mics can pick you up?
Yeah, thank you, good question. We're actually, both counties are implementing the Love My Air program. It's a program that we're both modeling after the city and county of Denver, they started this program. And then both counties again received EPA funding to really replicate the Denver program, so. It's really modeling or monit- monitoring for PM two point five as a pollutant. So Jeffco and, and us are both doing the same exact program, we have a number of sensors throughout Adams County. We're actually working with your sustainability coordinator to try to get something located right near City Hall here and in the area, so. We have, Adams County has about twenty sensors throughout Adams County, but we're also partnering. With Rappahoe County and some cities shared in Inglewood because when we applied for the grant. We were Tri-County Health Department and so when we were awarded, we had to keep it the same, so. We're, we're partnering with, with Rappahoe, but yet. My, my counterpart over in Jeffco talked quite a bit about our programs, we're using, utilizing the same exact sensor. In both counties and data, and data dashboard vendors, so. That's in a nutshell what the Love My Air program is.
Fantastic. Just in general, how many sensors, oh, you, you mentioned it in Adams.
Yeah, we have, we have twenty, we're, we're hoping to deploy four more. Throughout all of the county and on our website, there's a link and it shows. Our whole dashboard and actually if you go to that Love My Air app, it has all of the different entities that are part of that and so Jeffco is on there, we're on there, Denver. Folder. Pretty much everybody who's, who's implementing the program is on that app.
And what all does it measure for?
So PM two point five is particulate matter, two point five micron size and smaller, so that fine particulate that can get into your lungs. We're also monitoring for NO2, which is a precursor to ozone. I'm, I'm not sure if, if Jeffco is monitoring for both of those, I know they're doing PM two point five. So it's not like. Vault organic compounds or air toxics, but it's that, it's that PM two point five pollutant that is widespread. Source wildfire smoke, you know, different sources, mobile sources, that type of thing.
Okay, well, thank you.
Absolutely.
Counselor Ireland.
So once you get the information, what do you do with it?
Good question. A lot of our program is, is raising awareness around the issue of air, of poor air quality and so. When we had started the program at Tri-County and what Denver was really starting out is working with school districts. To, you know, work with like school nurses and principals and and folks within the schools to. Work with asthmatic children, that's kind of where we started, it was, was looking at our asthma data and focusing on schools, but when. We started it right as COVID was hitting and so. The school districts were hard to engage in that time, so then we started working with municipalities. We actually are working with anything library district as well as an educational outlet. So a lot of it is raising awareness. Within the community, but then also trying to take the data, which is a big question of like. How do we use the data to maybe inform policy change and systems changes and so. We're not quite there yet, there's a lot of data to gather. But, you know, ultimately, and, and again, our, our data is not like reference grade or. Just the same data that, that the state health department would utilize as a regulatory monitor, so there's some difference in limitations. But we want to collect the data, inform the public, inform, you know, all of our partners that are working with us in the program so that they can educate through all their channels. And then see where, you know, how we can leverage this data to make system policy changes locally.
So do you test anything pollen for asthma? Pollen in the air or any of that?
No, it's just strictly that, that PM.
And that, and not like. We've been talking about lead from airplanes or none of that?
Yeah, we're not, I mean, there's, there's a whole breadth of, you know, of pollutants that are out there, but really we're focused on that PM two point five.
I've lived in Colorado for a long time and we used to have days where you cannot burn. And then we went to. Gas fireplaces, now they're not liking those. So I'm just wondering what you're doing with the data? Making so none of us can drive, I don't know, like what the point of it is.
Well, no, I mean, I, I think mostly again, I think really our program is more just really building that awareness of poor air quality, like for example. It was about this time last year when you had all the Canada wildfire smoke that came into town and so, you know, we u- we utilized the AQI, which is the EPA's. Basically graphic of like when, when it's safe to go outside, when it's unhealthy to go outside. So it's really trying to get that in front of folks to say, hey, it's a bad air day today, if you're asthmatic or have other. You know, long sort of condition COPD, it may be today is not a good day, so it's trying to get those messages out. Is really kind of where the program is focused.
Thank you.
Counselor Hatt.
Yeah, um. On your slide, opportunities for collaboration. You have environmental justice as one of those opportunities and can you expand on what that looks like?
Yeah, so we again are really looking at hearing what the needs are and what the. What the areas of priority are for the various. Entity, in this case, council. And our role is to, to strategize and so in, in that particular, you know, area, it really is looking at policy. As well as. Behavior changes and and things that we all can do to. To make sure that we live better lives, you know, we talk about them as the social determinants of health and. And how do we make sure that our potentiality for living a thriving and amazing life with our families and our loved ones? Is such and so. Those are, those are really the, the two main areas and. We really look at, we call it like the coalition of the, of the willing, like. We want to know who's motivated and who's willing to do the work because. Just, just because we're raising an issue doesn't mean that we're motivated to do the work yet, you know, it could just mean that we want to sit around and talk about it for a while and study it and we've all. We've all been in those situations, but we're, we're really interested in who, who's ready to do the work. And if people are ready to do the work and we have capacity and we have expertise and and strategy around that, we, we'd love to partner. So that, that's a little bit behind sort of the philosophy of it.
Okay, and you bring up on policy. I guess my question would be, how do we keep the conversation going so that way if you have policy ideas that are on the local level? That we could have those conversations?
Yeah, I mean, I think making sure that we have a regular cadence is good, you know, I think that. Making sure that if you have things that are on your minds as a council that you reach out because we're always willing to come back and have those, that dialogue and and those conversations. One such example has to do with, Dr. Story mentioned syphilis and the public health order. Embedded in that story is the fact that the Adams County Health Department began work to, to write a syphilis bill before that public health order. And so we really got the conversation moving because we said it's an epidemic. In our county and in lots of our counties up and down the I twenty five corridor. Our medical director, Dr. Albanese and our. Our senior policy advisor said, let, let's do this and we. We got the legislators and they began work in earnest on a syphilis bill. And so that began because of conversations around this is a problem in our community. And we don't feel like anyone's listening or hearing us and, and, and people are really suffering and they don't need to suffer. Because the solution is sort of simple. It's not simplistic, but it's simple in the sense that if we have people who are pregnant test in the third trimester, we can decrease. Decrease syphilis greatly, so I'm, I'm making it brief, but. Really it's making sure that there's an open dialogue and you are welcome to reach out to myself, to Dr. Widenbach directly and. And really we want to know your priorities, we begin in the summer to craft legislative priorities. We have a person that is solely an FTE that's solely dedicated to policy work. And so he is at the Capitol and he is writing legislation with legislators and, and doing that work and that's. That's how important it is to us is, is that we actually have a, a staff member dedicated to that work.
Any other questions?
Great presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good to see you all.
Yes, thank you.
Everybody for, everybody good for our third presentation?
So Mayor Protem, councilors, if you remember back on March fourth, we had CDPHE come in and talk to us about. Lead and lead associated with aviation fuel and things like that. And at the same time, lots of conversations about the CNR and where the CNR was going. I think it was sometime in late March, the council said, you know, hey, let's get a study session together. Where, you know, we can talk about where we go with RMMA and things like that and so. In that spirit, wanted to bring in the owners and the operators of RMMA to talk about. What's going on at RMMA and where we're headed and so we've invited Ben Miller and Stephanie Corbo to come in. And provide a presentation, we are joined by county manager Joe Kirby and then Commissioner Kraft Tharp, thank you very much, both of you for spending your evening with us. But this is really an opportunity for the council to ask questions, but to understand where we're going. And, and then we have an executive session which is, you know, really an, an opportunity to consult with. An aviation legal expert to answer any, you know, questions that the council may have, but. We welcome both of you for this evening's presentation, thank you for the time and effort, I looked at the slides, I think we're on the right track and so thank you for your time.
Thank you, so I'll kick it off tonight, so I'm Stephanie Corbo, I'm the chief financial officer for Jefferson County. And the airport has been reporting to me since twenty twenty two. And in the interim, I'm the acting airport director for about one more month. And then Ben Miller has been at our airport for six years and a public servant for fifteen. So we are aware of the direct questions you have for us, so I want to share with you that there's a couple of questions that. Are a little premature for us, we don't have the, the exact answer for you tonight. But what we are prepared to do is share with you the information that we do have available as of this date, okay? So we want to walk through and just give you an update on our airport director. We want to talk a little bit about the planning that's been happening at the airport in terms of development. And provide some historical context and some current plans and projects that we have. We also want to talk through the aeronautical development by others. Unleaded fuel transition that we have in place as well as community engagement going forward. So just really quickly, our airport director has been a very open and inclusive process, we had. Members of the public, the community, as well as the county come in and help inform what they were looking for in an airport director. We did have quite a few applicants come in, they had to submit videos, essays, resume, cover letter. We narrowed that down to eleven applicants, brought seven through a process from an internal and an external panel. We chose three of those to come in, to go through additional interviews with our leadership team as well as an open forum. So I'm not sure if some of you were able to attend that, but it was, we had a little under fifty people that were able to attend that and we will be announcing that later this week. Okay? So now I'm going to turn it over to Ben.
So I'm a planner by trade, happy to talk about planning all night long, I'm sure you guys probably would prefer not to, but I will give you a quick historical context to. How this airport kind of grew up over time and kind of breeze through a few of these slides and then get to the meat of it, but. This, this airport has been planning for its growth since, since before it actually opened in nineteen fifty nine, there was an airport master plan that recommended four phases of development. And that actually, if you look at a Google map today, generally mirrors what our development out there looks like. We've gone through the years over more master plans, the one on the left, I know it's hard to see, but it's from the nineteen eighty eight master plan. I like to use this example because this actually showed a third parallel runway. Adjacent to the two parallel runways that exist today. So people could say that and say, oh, that's scary, but if you read the text of this master plan, it talks about how important it is for a, for an airport master plan to be flexible. And it gave a bunch of different scenarios and it said, you know, basically it says aviation is very unpredictable, you know, operations will go up, will go, go down. There's a lot of innovation, planes change, fleet mix changes. So it's not that we show something on a plan and that's the, the way forward for the, the next twenty years. So speaking of operations changing, I do like to always mention this slide, we were a very busy airport back in the nineteen seventies, it was the heyday of general aviation. So that was when a lot of plans were, or a lot of airports were going through their master plans, you know, projecting future growth. So that was when a lot of plans were, or a lot of airports were going through their master plans, uh you know, projecting future growth. But then there was an oil embargo and other reasons why operations reduced for a while, but it's it's cyclical. Sometimes people ask, were you really busy, that busy in the nineteen seventies? This is a picture of uh the ramp around our terminal back then and you can see all the little Cessnas and Pipers, uh those small aircraft that are squeezed onto the ramp. Um, so this is kind of what our same ramp looks like today. Um, so that's a little history lesson, but we'll get into today's plans and what the airport is working on going forward. So the way we look at how we plan at an airport, there's the airport master plan, which was kind of an FAA-recognized document that guides our capital projects and and other things go uh into the future. Um, we also do our own studies. If we have individual questions, we work with, sometimes it's our on-call engineering firm or we'll hire a separate planning firm to answer specific questions that the airport has, such as the runway three-two-one future feasibility study. Uh, we also have to look at how we land use plan at the airport. And this interesting thing there is we don't do our own land use planning, that we're basically a landlord. But we have to kind of figure out what what kind of growth should occur where, so that's guided by an overall development plan, which is the zoning for the airport as well as a strategic business plan that we undertook fairly recently. So again, to that master plan, uh it's it's typically funded by the FAA and is is a very large effort. So their target date is is roughly every ten years, but it's not a mandate. Um, and the goals according to the FAA, I I list them all out here. I won't I won't read them for you, but again, there has to be an emphasis on flexibility because aviation can change quickly. You know, September eleventh was a huge, uh, you know, huge change for the industry. So was the recession of two thousand seven, two thousand and eight. Um, and I don't think everyone would have predicted the the pilot shortage that's currently fueling some of the demand for operations here at the airport. The specific master plan that we're working off of was done in twenty eleven and it projected a growth of to in operations of up to a hundred ninety-three thousand to two hundred sixty-five thousand operations by twenty thirty. So we've exceeded that a little bit by twenty twenty-four. I think we're at two hundred and eighty-some thousand operations last year. Uh, and it recommended future landside and airfield improvements. That guides our CIP and guides development around the airfield. Uh, it also creates an airfield layout plan, so that's typically the map you guys will see that comes out of a master plan. That's the one that kind of shows all the recommended improvements and development. So that one's signed off by the FAA. Uh, our plan also includes what we call an environs land use plan and that was a collaborative guide that was to help guide development around the airport to ensure that there are compatible uses. And I will give one of the planners of Westminster credit here. When you guys were working on your own comprehensive plan a couple of years ago, they reached out to me to have a discussion on land uses around the airport and what we thought of our growth versus what land uses they were recommending. And to me, that was like a model of of good coordination for the airport and the city. So this is that airport layout plan from twenty eleven. Um, and I'll zoom in later on a couple of different sections, but essentially there's some major projects that are shown on this. One was the relocation of Colorado one-twenty-eight. So if you have a drive around that side of the airfield on the north, you see a big wall. That was one of the the major projects that came out of this plan to increase the runway protection zone and preserve that land entirely on airport property. Um, but then there's a lot of other stuff that hasn't happened, like an extension of three-zero left uh to lengthen that runway. Um, and it talked about decommissioning a taxiway and now we're talking about decommissioning a runway. So things have shifted over time in terms of of what our airfield needs are since twenty eleven. So here's the zoomed-in picture, more or less illustrating development on the north side of the field. The the thing I would point out here is that this is mainly built out now uh with the addition of the shelter fixed base operation development that is largely taking up the space uh there on the east side of that map. So naturally, once the north side of the field developed out, which essentially happened here within the last couple of years, the focus turns to the south side of the field and so we're looking at CIP projects and especially with Verve's uh relocation of Sim Street further south away from airport property that also uh allows this side of the field to develop. So we we take our airport master plan. We also keep looking at airfield needs uh on an ongoing annual basis and have a meeting with the FAA and C dot Aeronautics to really inform our airport improvement pro- program and the capital improvement program. I think of the AIP as the one that the FAA helps fund and then the the CIP are the other projects that we fund on our own. Um, so typically an AIP project includes a ninety percent match, uh federal match, a five percent state match and five percent local funding from the airport. Uh, so looking at the next few years of projects, we're looking at constructing that taxiway uh to the south into that development area as well as reconstructing the perpendicular taxiway that connects to it because it's in pretty poor shape. Uh, as well as a basin one-sixty drainage, that's basically to make sure that all the stormwater um is accommodated on the airfield. As part of these projects and upcoming projects, you may have heard about us undertaking a part one-fifty airport noise compatibility study that hopefully will kick off this year uh and on down the list. I will point out that new terminal design is not building a new terminal for airlines. It was a recommendation from our master plan that we would expand our current term- terminal as the tenants um essentially maximize the space and we're kind of there, but I don't think we'll actually kick off that project anytime soon. We're we're not looking to look to work on that even though our our terminal is leaky and the HVAC needs a lot of work and there's certainly some needs there since it was built in the eighties. Um, but probably not kicking off that project soon. And then um the other big one that we're trying to get our heads wrapped around and that's why there's question marks on the cost is what uh the runway three-two-one decommissioning looks like. We're hoping that runway lasts until twenty twenty-six at least. And I'll have some additional details on that uh later on in this presentation. And then we also have a commitment at least or a discussion with the FAA that our next target for airport master plan update is in twenty twenty-eight. Again, these are revisited on an annual basis. So if I show this slide to you this year, it might look and shift uh differently by the end of this year when we have those discussions with the FAA. This is what that AIP uh program looks like in map form. So you can see some of these are actually just basic reconstruction of taxiways or number seven is a seal coat of a runway, just to make sure that that pavement condition uh stays good. Uh, but then if you see that red um project, that's the taxiway Otis Delta uh construction that will be kicking off. And then obviously the purple one is the crosswind runway runway three-two-one. So along with the airport improvement program funding from the FAA comes the FAA grant assurances. So every time our sponsors sign a grant with the FAA, we agreed uh with to uphold all these grant assurances. I picked two of them out because they're some of our most common questions asked about, you know, can you do this or can you not do that and you know, that that twenty-two is one of the ones that I think we all hold most dear. It's we have to make the airport available as a public use airport, just like a public highway is uh without unjust discrimination to types, classes, kinds of aeronautical activities. Um, so that's that's kind of something we agree to every year, every time we sign an AIP grant with the Federal Aviation Administration. A little bit more specifics on the taxiway taxi lane project that we're kicking off construction on. Uh, so that was shown, this is a a concept from our strategic business plan, which I'll get into. Um, but it essentially with the relocation of Sim Street allows uh allows us to unlock that land for development. And then on the on the same time, that taxiway that's perpendicular in blue is in is in very terrible shape, so we're reconstructing part of that. And so there's actually a phase one and then phase two will be the next year's funding to actually reconstruct more of that taxiway. As part of that, as part of any uh major AIP project, we have to follow the federal NEPA process, National Environmental Protection Act. Um, and so we work with our consulting engineers and the FAA to determine what level of environmental review is required. Uh, and then we have our consultant perform that and it's signed off on by the FAA. So in this case, it was like, it's called a categorical categorical exclusion, um which modeled all sorts of different things and looked at cultural and historic resources and and looked at noise modeling as well uh and predicted that there might be about worst-case scenario, roughly, I think thirty-six thousand additional operations, something like that. Um, and the worst case, if you built this out as two hangars and corporate hangars, um and and there was certain amount of operations per day. Um, but I want to preface that, we don't know what's going to be built out there. Um, and that prediction of operations could change significantly and Pilatus is a great example. Uh, they take up a lot of land on the south side of the field and I would guess, and this is just a guess, contribute about one operation to the airport a day, probably less. Um, so if it was manufacturing, operations are very, very little impact. Um, but yes, if it was something more intensive of a use, we'd have more operations. I know there were some questions about the the future of runway three-two-one. This really came up a couple of years ago as the condition of it and it hadn't had a major reconstruction since I think the nineteen eighties as that condition has just been deteriorating and is product- projected to fail uh by about twenty twenty-six. And ultimately, it's kind of the airport's call uh when we decide to close that simply for safety reasons. At some point, we didn't need to just tell pilots, you cannot use that runway anymore. We can no longer glue the pieces together uh and you know, on a on an annual basis. So because we knew that was coming, we undertook a what we called the future feasibility study to say, you know, we don't have funds available in the next few years to reconstruct this. What should we be looking at doing in the future? So that study looked at a number of different things. It looked at the pavement condition. Uh, it looked at operationally how that runway is currently used and the answer there is very, very little. It's less than one percent of our operations. Um, back in the nineteen sixties, when a lot of airports were being designed and planned, there was a lot of small aircraft that were tailwheel aircraft and they are the ones who are very reliant on having what's what the FAA calls a crosswind runway. Uh, so that if the winds are very perpendicular to our primary runway, it gives them an option to land more directly into the wind on a crosswind runway. More modern aircraft or larger aircraft, that's not as much of an issue. Uh, and what the FAA would tell you, because they are not typically funding um reconstruction of crosswind runways anymore, just from a priority of funding standpoint, is that there are other airports in the region and they view the airports as operating as a system. So if a a pilot is in the sky and needs a runway aligned with that type of wind, for example, Erie's Airport has that sort of runway alignment. Um, so we're still talking with the FAA and our engineers about ultimately what it looks like to decommission the runway. We we think or we hope it'll last till twenty twenty-six. Maybe not even till then based on some of our maintenance crew that are out there on a daily basis. Uh, and so the FAA said, hey, we will, we'll, we'll talk about it, but you know, we need it to not look like a runway anymore. And so that may mean turning up some of the pavement. It may mean just putting giant Xs down the runway, although I think the control tower would like to use it for a taxiway as long as they can. Um, so if we end up doing a major project, it will also be subject to a a federal NEPA review uh and we'll we'll address it at that time. So that was kind of how the airport thinks about maintaining the airfield itself, but I'll mention briefly kind of the the land development that's going on. Uh, we undertook a strategic business plan, knowing that uh interest in the south side of the field was was kind of occurring. Uh, and it was really to answer the question of what could even fit over there? And what would it look like? What's what's a couple scenarios to see what would develop over there? Um, this is not based on any particular development proposal that we received. Um, but it helps the airport think through if there was a proposal for T-hangers. Where would they go? Would they go up front? Would they go further back? Should we wait if we receive a proposal for those? Um, so it's just one idea to think about taxi lane layout and 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 the layout of the roads around and and through the south side of of the airport. Uh, we presented the strategic business plan to the the Community Noise Roundtable and the Jeffco Airport Advisory Board uh through twenty twenty-one. And we'll use it going forward. And and then the other thing we use uh just to make sure development is approvable at the airport is our overall development plan, which is essentially the zoning for the airport. And what it essentially says is, um, you know, aeronautical uses are approved by right on the airport property. And so as long as they meet a certain design criteria, just like any sort of zoning criteria you would have in your town, there there is assumed to be a by-right use. Uh, so an example of that coming in with shelter, which again built out kind of that last remaining empty portion on the north side of the airfield. And so that's for the most part uh has filled out that side of the field and so I I get probably one or two calls a week from people who are like, hey, I've been waiting on the waitlist for a hangar at your airport for years. Can I just build my own hangar? Is there any spot to build a hangar? Um, and they're always looking on this side of the field. And so there's there's really not. There's there's essentially no opportunity to build build on this side of the field anymore. Um, so then we have discussions on this side of the field and so what we know is currently happening or is proposed to happen, I mentioned the taxiway that's being extended. Uh, along with the south side of the field, there's a right of first refusal from Pilatus Aircraft to build another phase uh of their development. And then the other thing that we are under discussions on and and will be go before the Board of County Commissions is a a ground lease for that. I guess I would call it an orange polygon there uh just south of the taxiway or just south of that of that runway. And so that is the only known um proposed discussion on that side of the field and that is proposed to be kind of a mix of corporate hangars and an FPO um or a or a maintenance and repair operation. I think they're still going through their due diligence and they also need to still have a ground lease approved through the Board of County Commissioners. Like I mentioned, we we still get uh interests and discussions from other other uh potential developers, but until we receive a letter of intent that we review, compare it against the the business plan and our airport master plan and then ultimately brief it to the Board of County Commissioners, uh to me, it's it's just talk. And so this is where we're at today. And anything else that would go before the board? I did want to bring up unleaded fuel again, uh just to know, let you all know where we are in that process currently. You may have seen some of these details before. Uh, but just a reminder, approximately ten percent of the fuel sold at our airport is a hundred low lead. And it's because most of the piston aircraft, most of the aircraft with propellers, that is what is required to be used per the pilot's operating handbook. Um, until lately, until within the last few years, now um pilots who own most of these aircraft can actually get what's called a supplemental type certificate to allow the use of uh what's called ninety-four unleaded or one hundred, one hundred from a, it's called Gamma one hundred, but another competing product. And so that's been a very recent development. It's a reminder that our airport does not sell the fuel directly, but we do have two fixed base operators on the field that do sell one hundred low lead. And we're aware of the lead studies being conducted around the airport. Um, and our focus is on transitioning to unleaded fuel by the FAA mandate of twenty thirty and ideally a lot sooner. And that that's our our way of of wanting to kind of lead the way on that. Uh, so the steps, we kind of have a process outlined. We're fortunate that within the last few years, there's a development of of two safe alternatives and I I think a third is on the way probably within the year. And so there's there's a lot of discussion within the aviation community of do you, you know, put all your focus on the Swift ninety-four UL because it's available now, but it only works for two-thirds of the fleet? Or do you wait for the one hundred R product that might be out next year that'll work for all of the fleet? Our focus is on at least offering a product as soon as we can, so that'd be that ninety-four UL. Essentially, the the biggest problem here is this one is of of market demand and and pricing, so we're scaling up production of this new fuel and pilots are sensitively willing to use it. But at the price that's it's it's available on the market right now, it's could be up to four dollars more a gallon. So it's it's trying to figure out how to close that gap from an airport's perspective, from an operator's perspective. That is one of the biggest conversation points right now, along with the infrastructure that's required to have another fuel on the field. Um, so our way of addressing that right now is we have purchased a fuel truck uh that we believe can be used to deliver ninety-four UL to aircraft. We're working on the purchase of a new bulk fuel tank so that we can accept large tanker loads of of the Swift ninety-four product, which will hopefully bring price parity with a hundred low lead somewhat within two dollars a gallon, um which is probably a a price that between the airport and C dot Aeronautics, we can subsidize for a year, few years until hopefully that price parity. price parity is actually naturally about even. So we're striving to have unleaded 94 introduced to the airport, ideally by fourth quarter of 2024. There's some discussions about CDOT Aeronautics, and they're being available for fuel subsidies starting in 2025. So we'll see how that affects things. But we're happy. It's interesting that lead has become such a hot topic, because I think 10 years ago, it would have been something that we couldn't have gotten our heads wrapped around. But now, I think the exciting thing in aviation is that within six years, hopefully 100 low lead is gone. So we're hoping to help make that transition happen even sooner. And I think that's all I had.
So what's next for community engagement? I think you're all aware that our Community Noise Roundtable that was formed in '21 disbanded. It actually disbanded in May of '24. They originally brought that to the group in April, but it did disband in May. And I just want you to know that Jeffco overall and Rocky Mountain Metro Airport, we're really committed to continue that ongoing dialogue with the community in the surrounding areas. And so we have a couple of things happening. So the Part 150 noise study that we're going to start this year, it's a two-year process. It does require public engagement. And so just going through that process, you know, the FAA typically likes to have a CNR attached to a Part 150 study because there is that required public engagement. Without that Community Noise Roundtable, we need to figure out a forum to make those things happen. So we've had several discussions internally over the past couple of weeks, and we have ongoing conversations happening to figure out, how do we sort of fill that void with all of the surrounding communities that are still interested, as well as the community members who want to, who have something that they need to share with us? So we're working on that. And then also, we had a Senate bill that just passed that requires us to have a noise plan, which also would include engagement with the surrounding community. So we have a couple of big things happening that we need to figure out what that's going to look like. And this is going to be a number one priority task for our new airport director. And so more to come on that. I wish we had something already set up. We are working diligently behind the scenes to figure out what that looks like. So hopefully in the coming weeks, we'll have something that we can announce and find out who's willing to participate. But definitely want to keep all of that dialogue continuing. So with that, that concludes our information we had for you. Are there any questions that you have for us?
How about I start this way? Since I started, do you have any?
No, no question.
Counselor Ireland?
Will you ever limit the flights, or are they just going to keep going up?
So the airport can't limit the flights just based on our grant assurances for those businesses. We can't stop them from operating. Anything that's already at our airport, we really need to allow them to operate their business. When you look at the development on the south side, which is our real only opportunity that we have, those master planning and the types of concepts that we have going in, so the new businesses going in, we can be more strategic about looking at those opportunities. And so not all development is created equal. When you think about manufacturing versus a flight school, you know, larger hangars versus smaller hangars, those all have different noise impacts and operational impacts. And so when you think about the current ground lease that we have coming forward, they're looking at corporate tenants. And corporate tenants don't fly every day. They may not even fly every week. And so those are really good tenants to have. They take up a lot of space. It's definitely a good revenue stream for our airport. It also creates an economic impact to the community by having that, those direct flights for those businesses in the community, so they can set up shop and hire employees. So that's how we're thinking about our development going forward, is the type of development that we're doing.
Okay, so it talked about development, and you weigh the surrounding community. Then we have all these people surrounding it that are so upset, because I've been to Green Knolls. I've sat there. It's flight after flight. You can see the pilot from the neighborhood. And it's not a quality of life. They have no quality of lives in their homes. They can't even go outside. So how is this weighed when we keep expanding and doing this airport? How do you weigh all that?
It's certainly one of the factors. I mean, on the flip side of that, a lot of those pilots that you might see from Green Knolls are local kids in your community who are trained to be pilots and pursuing a career. So there's balancing the economic development that the airport provides with the impacts in the local community. I think this is why local land use planning and compatibility is so important as well, is to make sure that, you know, both what we're doing and the city of Westminster is doing are both in alignment. And Green Knolls was probably not the best example of that in the past, in terms of placing a neighborhood underneath the flight path of a primary runway. But we still are sympathetic with the noise. And as Stephanie mentioned, we cannot just limit operations, but we can prioritize what we want to see at the airport occurring in the future, in terms of what types of flights. And I do believe the aviation industry is cyclical. So we might be high in operations right now, but you know, I always say, one of the best things you could do if you want flight operations to go down is to advocate that the US government adopts single pilot operations for commercial airliners, because it would very much restrain or restrict the market for pilots going forward. And it would cut off that job training that's currently being fulfilled at our airport. Maybe not the thing that a budding pilot wants to hear who's training at our airport currently, but there's cyclical impacts on our industry.
So have you seen any impact from AI? Because I think that's to take over pilots.
That's, you know, that's another, this is why I think master plans need to be so flexible, is there's, who knows what'll impact our industry in the next 10 years.
Okay, thank you.
And one of our flight schools is actually having flight simulation in the building, so they need more office space so that it's less flight hours outside. And they're doing more flight simulation in the building, which is helping.
Thank you.
I chose an order. Counselor Carmelia.
All righty. I just wanted to say thank you for making this deck so informative. It's packed with information, and I really appreciate that. The more, the better. And I think our residents will too. And also thank you for immediately beginning to work on a new stakeholder plan. Our council here has worked really hard to maintain a connection with the county and with the FAA and the airport, and worked hard to maintain a seat at the table to ensure that our voice is heard. And so thank you for being willing to continue that dialogue in one way or another. I know that that's very dependent on the new director, but thank you for keeping that in mind. I also am very grateful that you are moving quickly on transitioning the fuel, that you're getting ahead of that. I realize that the goal is 2030, but you're making moves right now. And so that's important, and I know that that's important to our residents to hear as well. So all of those are fantastic. I did want to ask about the, what I believe I heard is the orange box for the expansion piece, is that was going to be leased? It said it was pending lease.
There it is.
Orange, yellow.
Yeah, pending ground lease. And so do we happen to know, I think you mentioned what it is that you're expecting to put there, but I know that an urgent question for our residents is, how many more, you know, planes in general are we expecting? How much do we think this will add to the airport in terms of number of planes per day?
It's tough to say right now, because I think they're interested in kind of doing their due diligence. But what I understand they're looking to build is a fixed base operation, along with some hangars, and perhaps a maintenance repair operation. So if you think of Shelter, it's a similar type of development. Shelter is a fixed base operation, so they, when, you know, when people fly in in their business aircraft, their aircraft are serviced and parked there. Or if you are a business here in Westminster or Brookfield, and you own an aircraft, it might be hangared in one of their hangars, leased through Shelter. So they're kind of the same business model as that, along with potentially a repair operation for business aircraft. So another type of operation that would not create many operations, but would actually create some good jobs in the community.
Okay, so it's more storage and repair is what's expected. Obviously, we can't promise anything, but that's, it's not expected to add to the number of planes. And this is the last build out that we think is going to happen to the, to RMMA?
So there's still land to the south, I would guess, another 50 to 60 acres, and it would be kind of what's illustrated here. But to me, this right now is greenfield development, and we don't know at all what would occur here. I've had lots of discussions with people who might want to build one hangar for their one aircraft. But the reality is, the infrastructure investment required out there, it just does not justify that one person coming in and building a hangar. There's just, there's just too much. You know, in my dream world, it's someone who comes in and brings another Pilatus type of operation, where they're doing some sort of manufacturing or repair or something like that. But it's just too early to say.
Okay, thank you. And then as far as the, well, thank you for touching on the 150. That was a question, but you answered it. As far as the runway removal, and then moving Sim Street and the taxiway, et cetera, which one of those, do they all get a NEPA review? Or which do, what don't?
Most would. And I think there's three levels of NEPA, and I'd rather have the FAA environmental planner answer this question to be sure. But yeah, anytime it's an AIP project, it triggers going through that process. But then they decide which of the three buckets of the environmental review it goes through. So it can be a relatively minor one, all the way to an environmental impact statement, which was like, was probably done for US 36.
Right.
So it just depends.
And so, and I guess this also depends, but what happens when we find out the results of those environmental impact statements? What will, I mean, does the work continue? How does the process, the planning, et cetera, evolve around that, those results?
I just, for the most recent ones, it's essentially an approval or a denial of the projects from an environmental review perspective. So the CADDX was approved for this taxiway extension going south.
Right. Okay. And so do we, and I don't know, I mean, I know an EIS is usually pretty thorough, but we don't even know that they'll require one for everything. And so in regards to PFAS, for example, with, you know, removing the runway, and regards to a lot of the toxic pollutants, there are major concerns from residents and from myself about the impacts downstream to Stanley Lake and to our, you know, runoff and to the environment in general. I think no matter what, when we get the results of the EIS, whether they approve it or not, that will be an impact. I just want awareness around that. And obviously, you're not an environmental director, so it's hard to point this your way. But how do we plan to prevent that? What are our mitigation efforts? I think we need to be thinking now about how we best mitigate the environmental impact.
And we also have a stormwater permit with the state of Colorado that we manage. So there's that as well, if it's specific stormwater runoff issues. And just to be, just to clarify, just because, like the runway three two one decommissioning, that may not be a full EIS. I think partly it depends on, was it shown in an airport master plan previously? But it's also just the scale of what you're proposing, and you work with the FAA to decide which bucket it needs to go through in terms of an environmental review.
Right. And I think that that's the concern of the residents and of myself, is that unfortunately, when it comes to EIS and NEPA involvement, it really has to meet a certain scale and threshold. And that is the case, and we know that there will be impact no matter what. And so we're hoping that there can be efforts taken, because there are a lot of chemicals. I mean, the unleaded fuel is thrown on the runway, right? I mean, how are we going to do this construction in such a way that it's as clean as possible? And that it's, you know, affects our residents as little as possible, because environmental health concerns are a major concern? And it could be that the, you know, federal level decides that this is not big enough to require a full-on study because of the cost, et cetera. And so, you know, how do we ensure that we get a voice with the project management plan at the airport to say, okay, you have to make sure that we're taking these mitigation efforts?
That's a great question. I'd have to take that one back, to just think about public input versus how the FAA typically runs the environmental review process.
Right.
I would point out, all of these projects also have to go through permitting with Jefferson County. So it's also, it goes through that sort of review process, including the environmental controls that are put on as part of any construction project in the county. So we'd have that as well. But it's your specific question, I'd have to think about that more.
Okay. Because I think that we're going to want to see some very clean and clear plans for, this will be disruptive, right? We know that. So what do we do about it, whether the federal level decides that this is their problem or not? So, okay. And then I guess my last question was, how much more expansion are we planning on? But I think you've answered that, that that's really hard to say. We touched on, right now, there's not any promised expansion, but there could be in the future, it sounds like. Okay. See nodding heads, so for the record, that's a yes. Okay, thank you. Those are my questions.
Counselor Hop?
Yes, so I have some concerns. Doing the background information, I found out that our RMMA is the third busiest airport in the state. There are takeoffs occurring every three minutes. And you are projecting 36,000 additional operations by expanding the airport. So it seems to me, when our residents have been expressing the significant health impacts due to aviation noise, I can see why there's a lot of distrust, because you are continuing to expand an airport that is already the third busiest and already has takeoffs occurring every three minutes. If we have takeoffs occurring every three minutes, which is disrupting, they can't, you know, they have to close their windows during the day because they can't work. There are people who have health issues that this makes worse, such as migraines, traumatic brain injuries. There are people with anxiety. We have veterans that are sensitive to noise. There are so many impacts of noise. And how can you say that you're doing, like, how busy do you, and I'm really, what I found really striking is when Counselor Ireland asked about balancing the concerns of our community. You talked about business, the businesses, and balancing economic viability, which is saying to me that you care more about businesses than you do about the health of our residents. At the end of the day, you are two miles away from a water source that serves three cities. Three cities. And so I don't see what you plan to do about noise if we are already the third busiest, and you want to build, which is going to, which means additional operations. That doesn't, that doesn't make any sense when we're looking at the impacts on our residents. Slide 11 says that you strive to be environmentally compatible and in harmony with local and regional plans and objectives. We have regional plans and objectives to keep our water safe. We have regional plans and objectives to keep our residents safe, including from noise. On slide 12, it says that your environmental land use plan, that you care about land uses surrounding the airport. Who decided it was a good idea to put an airport next to a water source for three different cities? I don't see any of these things being addressed. To me, it sounds like you care a whole lot more about money than you do about the health of our residents, because you would not be expanding an airport that is the third busiest airport in the entire state if you cared about the issues coming from our residents.
Can I start in anything? Okay. Thank you for those concerns. Those are definitely some concerns of our communities that I wanted to share a little bit of information. So we do make sure that surrounding our airport, that we have stormwater runoff so that it doesn't collude with our water sources. And so we have teams from both the water sources, as well as our stormwater, to make sure that we're not having that collusion of water to where we're to make sure that we're not having that collusion of water to where we're contaminating water sources. And that's inspected. I don't know the frequency of that, to make sure that that doesn't happen. And that is definitely a concern of ours. When we're looking at that development on the south side, and it's actually less than thirty-five thousand, it's seventeen-something each, but it's about thirty-five thousand operations, that's the maximum number of operations if, if that development happens over the course of time. And so, that is, that is a very, uh, aggressive number. If, if and when that layout gets built out exactly the way that it was shown, that's the most number of flights that could happen there. So when we talk about the development that we have a potential ground lease for, where they're looking at building the corporate hangars, we're not gonna have anywhere near those type of operations when that happens. Our development takes a couple of years to happen as we go through the process. Right now, with interest rates, a lot of our deals are falling through, because it doesn't make sense economically for businesses to come in. And so, if and when that whole south side gets built out, that's the maximum number. We won't reach that potential, probably not even in the next decade, if, if not more. And so, when you think about that whole south side being developed, it's gonna take a little bit of time. I'm not sure if you know, um, Pilatus, we keep talking about Pilatus. Pilatus is, is an aircraft, and they assemble those aircrafts. They have a right of first refusal for a large piece of our land. Right now, um, is it Switzerland?
Mm-hmm.
They come in from Switzerland, the aircraft. And what we do is, we actually build and assemble the seats inside of it in one of their buildings. And on a second building, um, we have a, it's a very high-functioning, um, facility that paints the aircraft. And so, really, they're taxing, the airplanes aren't even flying, they're taxing them back and forth so they don't get miles on the airplane. And their third, their third manufacturing is to, do you know what that operation would be?
Not this small.
But it's another assembly piece, because they don't have space in Switzerland. That's the type of business we're looking at actually bringing in, uh, to Rocky Mountains. But I do want you to assure that, as we're thinking about all of the future growth, there is definitely a balance of making sure that we are working with our communities, um, as well as making sure that development does work with the neighboring communities and the economy. And, and I just wanted to go back to the operations of our airport. Um, they are very cyclical, and we do have a large spike the past couple of years. During COVID, when that happened, we did have one of the largest retirements of our airline pilots. And the only reason why we're having these increased operations is due to our flight schools. Our flight schools are very busy, they have a significant waitlist right now. And so, building up that pipeline of our airline pilots is what's driving the majority of this. So once we, we start filling those seats, and we have airline pilots that are graduating, you're gonna see a decline in those flight schools, because there's not that much in recreational, um, uh, people going through to get their pilot's license. There's a significant drive for students, like, current graduating students are actually taking this opportunity to go through and become a pilot, because they make really good money as soon as they graduate. And so, this is something that we haven't really seen to this degree with COVID. Um, but we are, this will soon pass, once those pilots graduate. So, uh, this isn't something that we're gonna see continue, um, at this rapid pace. Everyone expects that to happen, um, because eventually, once you, um, airlines are hiring these pilots, there's not that, that extended pipeline that they need to continue to hire people. So I hope that, I know that's not a perfect answer, I know there are serious concerns, and that's why we definitely wanna continue the conversation, to figure out how to make this, um, noise relief, especially from those highly impacted communities, but having a good balance of, of the future of this airport. And right now, we're in that busy time with flight schools.
So, the current development is not working for many of our residents, the current development. I'm not even talking about the projected development. What was, you are currently, by having takeoffs occurring every three minutes, you are destroying the health of some of our residents. What are you going to do? Because, because noise is a health, uh, i- it affects, significantly affects some people's health. So what are you gonna do for the people that you are d- destroying their health right now, so that way you can grow your operations and get more pilots?
So, that is, that is something that we are trying to figure out right now, how to partner with our neighboring, uh, communities to figure out what are those options. The CNR did hire a study to have flight path changes that got turned down. So we need to continue to work through some of those things.
The CNR failed because it was ineffective.
Mm-hmm.
We have many cities who are listening to our residents, and we are not one of them.
I'm gonna wanna get into the. I guess, I would just say, I, I like to clarify a misconception that we don't actually make substantially more, or even more revenue when our operations are high, uh, 'cause those operations are typically small Cessnas. They're not burning a lot of fuel. There's a lot of them on one leasehold. Um, and the, the leases we get from those businesses are not significant compared to the larger corporate leaseholds that hold one or two large corporate aircraft. And so, it's not, this airport's not cheering or hoping that our operations increase, that's not a motivation for the airport. Um, the development on the south side, we're not, we're not hoping for a lot more of that type of operation. Um, but on the other hand, we are a public-use airport that used federal funds to acquire property. Uh, and we have to make our airport available as a public-use airport. It just says, you know, if you accept funds for a highway in your community, you can't, and turn around and say, sorry, these types of cars can't drive down the highway anymore. Um, so it, it's, it's a very tricky job, as airport management, to actually still be, uh, you know, accommodating to all users per our grant assurances, um, while also trying to run a business and, and balance our own, our financial sheet. But, um, we absolutely hear the concerns of the community, and actually, I, I, the only thing I challenge is the assumption that we're cheer, that we're cheering for more operations.
It, it's not a concern, it's an impact. We're not concerned that impacts, health impacts may occur. Health impacts are occurring right now. So, and I don't hear any, oh, we're gonna look at it, we're gonna do studies. You, you, the CNR was developed in twenty-one, and it's gotten worse. So, I don't, I don't see any answers for our residents, and I don't see any, um, concern over the health impacts in the way that you are negatively impacting our residents.
I'll go back around. Counselor Rosati?
Hi.
Hi.
Um, I share a lot of Counselor Hatt's concerns. Um, Counselor Ireland asked the question, that I, I'm a stickler for answers, right? I don't think I heard the answer to her question, and correct, correct me if I'm wrong. But she asked, um, what are, how are you balancing community health with, really, is profit-driven operations, right? I, I get what you're saying. You're, you're, you're saying you're not really pulling for more operations, because the profit gain from one leasehold is not really, you know, your incentive for getting more operations. But you are making lots of profit. And my questions will revolve around the financials, I'm glad to have the CFO here. Um, but to, to first backtrack to Counselor Ireland's question, how is that, so you have a strategic business plan? How are you balancing community health, environmental safety with operations specifically? How are you integrating that into your strategic business plan?
So, remember how I was sharing with you earlier that not all business development is alike? So when we're looking at the type of business development we're putting in, we're looking at those things that have as minimal impact to noise as possible, right? So, if we wanted to, and we have requests for flight schools right now based on operations of just building the entire south side with flight schools. Flight schools are the primary reason why we have high traffic. The traffic is the flight schools. The other operators are flying recreationally occasionally. The jets are coming in maybe weekly, if not even weekly. Manufacturing, they're not flying very often, they're actually taxing between their business and they're, they're pulling it. And so, one of them is looking at the type of development we're bringing in that have the lowest type of noise impact. And so it's balancing that. And the other way that we're looking at health is we are trying to transition as quickly as possible, safely, to unleaded fuel. And those are the primary two health concerns that we're hearing about.
So I get that, and that's forward-looking, right? And I, that's, my question is really on the flight schools?
Mm-hmm.
Haven't you increased the number of flight schools?
So.
Over these last few years?
We do not own or operate these planes. And so, we have three direct leases with flight schools. We have three leases with flight schools. We used to have four direct leases, but our helicopter business went out of business. So we have three direct leases with flight schools. Our FBO has a small flight school operation of six planes. So we have four flight schools at our airport. We haven't increased the number of flight schools at our airport. What has happened is, the demand for becoming a pilot has increased, so they're allowed to use their entire fleet to operate trainings for pilots. So they're busy, they're flying all of their fleet of their airplanes, because there's the demand there. Whereas in the past, they would have a fleet, and not their entire fleet was going up in the air. And they weren't up in the air as often. And so, we cannot control the operations of our flight schools. We have a lease with them, we're basically their landlord. And because we take money from the federal government for our infrastructure, part of our grant assurances do not allow us to limit the operations of our businesses. And so, that's not within our control, is the flight school. What we're trying to explain is why they're higher, but we are not increasing the number of flight schools we have. Our flight schools are just busy at the current moment.
So you're new, for, so going forward, with strategically picking the businesses that won't be flying, you're look, you're guaranteeing us, I know you can't guarantee it, but you're, you're basically saying it's not going to increase operations in the air? The, the, the choices that you will make will not be increased operations in the air?
So what I'm telling you is that, when you're building on an airport, and you have development on the aeronautical land, you have to have an airplane flying into that business. What we're looking at is trying to bring in the businesses that have the lowest impact to our community. There will be operations. If we took that entire south side right now, and we built it up with flight schools, that would be in a seriously busy, busy airport. So we're not looking at growing our south side with flight schools. So the type of development that goes in, it will have an operation, but we're looking at bringing in the ones that have the lowest impact of flights and operations and noise. So even a Cessna has a different noise level than a jet. Our, currently, all of our, um, flight schools are looking at the types of equipment that they're putting in their engines to see if they can lower the decibels of their current aircraft by two to three decibels, just by changing some things within the engine. And I'm not mechanical in any way, and Ben, you probably know what I'm talking about. I feel like it's like a cylinder. But they're looking at small things like, e- even like that, to try to make, uh, somewhat of a difference.
And that's my next question. What are the, what is in your control on the current flight schools? That's one example, but.
Not in control of that.
But you're not able to mandate that?
No, but we have great relationships, and our flight schools really do care about the community. And they're willing to try everything that they can to help make a difference. As soon as we have unleaded fuel, is not, as long as it's not, um, economically, you know, unsustainable for them to pay four dollars more, that's why we're looking at a subsidy, they're willing and ready to make that conversion with us. So there, our voluntary noise abatement at night, that trustee Serbu, um, from the town of Superior put in place, we had ninety-five percent compliance with doing that. So they're, they're trying, and they are doing as much as they can to make a difference. And it's our relationship with them, when we're asking them and working with them, and trying to partner with the community and the surrounding communities to make those differences. That's why it's important that we do figure out what the next version is of a noise meeting, where we're working with our communities, um, both, you know, cities and towns and counties and surrounding counties, as well as the community, to figure out what are those things that we can do to make a difference, even if it's a small difference.
How much profit does the airport make, um, did it make last year versus projected this year? Maybe you can't give me the projected, but what's, what was last year?
I can't even, we're, we're not a for-profit enterprise. The, the, the money that we raise at the airport goes back into the airport for maintenance and operations.
Yeah.
So what's, what's top line, Ben?
We'd have to bring our finance manager.
She's the CFO.
Yeah, but of, of the county, of the airport, I can't remem- I don't have that P and L remembered. We have thirty-eight funds, and that's one of them, and I just, I don't have that memorized right now. I wasn't prepared to talk about their financials.
Money the airport came in last year, um, or this year? What percentage of your employee-based base is employed by Westminster residents? So how, what percentage of your employee base is, are, are residents of the city?
Are you talking employees of any business at the airport?
Yes.
Or the, what we'd have to do, um.
I don't know that.
Because we, we hear a lot that there's a lot of impact on jobs. I'm curious, what is that? How many jobs are you actually providing to residents here?
Of Westminster? I don't have that information.
The Senate bill, um, that requires a noise plan, do you have any details around what that noise plan? How are you integrating that noise plan into your current operations, or thinking about?
Just found out about it, so this is, it's very new information for us, so we need to figure out how we are going to do that. We lost our one meeting where we talk about noise, and so we're trying to figure out what does that look like for us going forward. So, we've had several meetings internally to talk about different options. We're working with different stakeholders across the community. We have upcoming meetings, and so that hasn't been decided yet. But as soon as we know what that looks like, we will definitely be sharing that, for participation.
Was there a date on there, on the bill, that we, with a deadline?
Of when we're required to have?
I think it was contingent on future C dot aeronautic grants. Uh, when they award their grants, they need to check that we have one in place. I'd wanna double-check on that. Um, and there, there's parts of that plan we already have in place, but I also understand there's gonna be more guidance from C dot aeronautics about how that should be implemented, and how airports should follow that. Um, so we look forward to that. I mean, that's, I, I actually enjoy that type of work in terms of developing our current voluntary noise abatement procedures. But the bill reference, or the act reference that they are voluntary, Ben, we're gonna work with all of our airport tenants. I know they are always racking their brains for other ways to lessen their impacts, uh, to the community. Um, and we'll, we're gonna, we'll form, as Stef- Stephanie said, another group to, to give out another crack.
Do the tenants do community engagement directly? So, rather than going through the layers, you have several tenants in your airport. Do they ever communicate to the community knowing that they're impacting them in such ways?
Not that I'm aware of. I mean, I think occasionally they'll do open houses, or a flight school would do, um, an open house for prospective students in the community. I know McCarr just had one of those, or Spartan College did. Um, but they primarily engage through us, uh, in terms of working through noise impacts and what they can do.
So since you weren't able to tell me about what your top line is for the airport, I, I'm guessing you, you, you won't know the percentage of, from, from flight schools. What percentage of your top line is directly from your flight schools?
Most of our revenue comes in, in, in the form of grants for infrastructure at our airport. So, so that's the majority of our revenue that we get, is actual grants for infrastructure. Uh, but I can, I'll certainly get that for you. I don't wanna misquote you, uh, a number, because then you're gonna remember that number. And so, I'm gonna give you the real number.
And you said the Part one fifty study requires public engagement?
Mm-hmm.
What, you have details on what that, what are the frameworks and, uh, boundaries around that?
Um, so I don't. So, um, where we're at in the process is we, we got it approved to be able to accept the FAA money. Um, and so the FAA's procurement process is a little bit different than the county's process. So we had, um, members of the old CNR, as well as members of the Airport Advisory Board and county staff, airport staff, um, sit on a selection process, and we had two firms bid. Um, so we did a review, um, and we evaluated these two firms for qualifications, and we picked one firm. Now, we need to work with that firm to talk about. Now we need to work with that firm to talk about what are the requirements for the Part one fifty. They're the experts, we, Ben and I, and our airport has never gone through a Part one fifty before. And so that scope of work with the vendor that we selected, um, they'll tell us what we need to do over the course of the next two years. They'll also give us a quote of how much exactly it will cost. And then we have to verify through independent, um, quotes to make sure, um, that that's within reason. And then we go under a contract and then we'll actually have what that plan looks like. So we're a few months out from actually having what that plan looks like for public engagement as well as the entire process of the Part one fifty study. But once we do have that, that's something that we will be actively communicating with all of our stakeholders as well as the community. And we'll be regularly talking about it, definitely at our airport advisory board. And whatever new group we have in terms of noise that gets formed, we'll have updates there as well. So right now I don't have the exact information, but we will have that soon. And that firm will help guide us for what that looks like. Because they're the experts in what we have to do in order to, to meet that and make sure it's a, an open and inclusive process.
Have you ever conducted a survey of the community?
For?
For noise impacts?
Not specific to noise impacts, to my knowledge.
Why not? I'm just curious. I mean, that's, you've, you've heard the noise, the noise about the noise.
Yeah.
So why haven't you, why, why, why haven't you done anything about that? In terms of at least getting a pulse on what's happening and why it's happening and?
That's actually, that's actually a really great comment and feedback. And I think that aligns really well with the airport director that we'll be bringing on. And so I'll pass that along, I'm sure that he's listening in now. Um, so that's something that they will definitely be leaning into. I know that, and I, I can't share their name, but they want to actually go, um, almost door to door in meeting people to find out what the concerns are and really understand what are options that we have in the short term as well as long term. There's definitely more long-term options for us of things that we can do. And so that's definitely a priority for them. And that survey could be an easy way to get more voices and more information collectively, uh, to guide that. So thank you for sharing that.
Yeah, and one of the feedbacks that I heard related to the CNR was there was a lot of, um, inefficiency on the community input versus the, so the panel of folks who were there versus what the community is actually feeling and thinking. So it, it felt like a layer of bureaucracy that was unnecessary. We can just directly ask the people what, you know, what do you think about this plan or that plan? So that might be something.
I one hundred percent agree with you, just the, the feedback and concerns that were shared. They never were able to be addressed. That's something that we're talking about actively. That's really important for us at Jeffco is we did feel like that was a disconnect too. So please know that that's definitely heard and something that we're working through, figuring out a better way to communicate and provide those answers and communication with our community.
And, uh, the pilot shortage.
Mm-hmm.
You mentioned it's fueling operations or, I, I may have written this wrong. What's, uh, can you educate me on what's the correlation on shortage and?
So our flight schools are the ones that train pilots.
Oh, sorry, sorry, you already did.
And then in twenty twenty, we have, there was a, a huge nationwide resignation of airline pilots. And now they're, they're feeding that pipeline for the commercial airlines. And so our flight schools are going through those processes.
Um, and my final comment is just, I mean, so there's been several years of this increasing. Community has been frustrated, enraged, rightfully so in many areas. Um, I'm sure you guys are frustrated in your own ways, right? On, and there's this, and there, there has been this mis, this miscommunication and lack of trust, which is the theme of, of government, just everywhere, city, all, all the way up to state, right? Um, to, to federal. But what I want to say is, I think that if you, just for, just so you guys can really try to understand what's happening. When the, when people feel that their experience is discounted or not real, and that's the communication that they've, that's what they're hearing back. Not from you two specifically, but from the entity, right? And from stakeholders protecting the entity or, and, and several other, you know, players in, in this game. The people feel that, that their experience is discounted and not real and they're exaggerated. Or, you know, when, when that happens, and you've heard some counselors here say this, but, you know, you're, you, you, you go to sleep at night and you hear, you can't go to sleep at night because you hear non-stop noise. Or you have this fear of lead impacting your kids or whatever the case may be. And that's your reality. Even if you don't agree with their reality, I think the level of, the style of communication, so I hope the airport director is, is, is listening to this. It's, I think half of this has been a function of the style of communication. The messaging has been really poor in how people have been communicating with residents. I think a lot of things that you said tonight may, make sense, right? A lot of things don't make sense to me, but the, the point is, you're not, you're, you shouldn't be trying to sell us. You should be trying to sell people. And people need to hear that you care. They need to hear that you are empathetic and your actions need to follow up with those words. So it's not just the wording that's been poor, but also there's been a lack of action that they've seen. And if there is action, so if there has been action, that's not been communicated very well also, right? So it's the communication gap, and that's usually the half the battle is how are we communicating with people? So if the airport director's listening, what I would advise is to really, you know, don't just put statements out. Don't, don't do what we've been doing. Do it very differently. There, there are people who do this really, really well. Get the consultant that you need to do this or whatever you need, the advisors, to shape the messaging and the communication because right now it's only make, it has only made things worse. All the folks who are involved just have been saying the wrong things. But I think everyone on this, every side has good intentions. I don't think you guys have bad intentions here. And I don't think the people have bad intentions. It's just a communication gap, so that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Counselor Jamar?
Wow. Um, first of all, I'd say thank you for always handling these situations with grace. Um, I know, Ben, that you, I believe were at the CNR since the, the onset of it. Um, I've been around since the onset of it. And there's been a lot of people who did a lot of hard work, um, throughout this council, throughout prior councils. And I certainly think that those folks, uh, and you deserve better than what I just saw in here. And I'm surprised that we get any guests in this, uh, chamber anymore. Um, couple of things that I would go ahead and, and share. Um, you hit one of them. I think that was an, an important point for people to understand is that you're not a for-profit enterprise. The money you make goes back into the airport, and I think that is really key. I find the airport just with this anomaly because I am certainly a small government person. If we could shrink government every day of the week, I'd be a happy camper. And so I find it odd that I have to argue on the side of a government entity to at least be fair to you because I just, there's so much misinformation and pandering and trying to put feathers in people's cap over this that it's just hard to even listen to. I heard here tonight that nothing has been done, nothing came out of the CNR. Jeffco and the airport have done nothing. Part one fifty, that's gonna, how much is that gonna cost you? Or Jefferson County?
Two million projected.
Um, I'd say that's, that's an investment in trying to figure out how we do better for the community. Um, I'm not saying that it's always been done perfect. I've been super frustrated, as you, I'm sure, Ben, you're well aware. I was one of the ones who said we should leave the roundtable because I was frustrated with it. Um, and some of that is out of my own lack of understanding and education about exactly how it works and why it was important for us to be there. Um, I certainly won't, uh, not advocate for the reason why the CNR was ineffective. We had members from the onset of it, from other, uh, government entities, that the answer was always no. The answer was always no. And so it's very hard when it takes only one member of an entity saying no for anything you tried to be no. That's the reason why we're getting so much money back is because we weren't able to spend all that money on things that, you know, that we were trying to accomplish. And it's the same reason why we didn't go down the path of looking at the things that trustee Serbo wanted to continue, um, for the daytime flights after seeing success of the nighttime flights. So it's hard for me to sit here and not say anything and act like it was a complete waste of time because I certainly don't think it was a waste of my time. And I certainly don't think that the folks that are upset about this in this room, I would hope are trying to advocate for residents. But the people who wanted to stay at the table that are in the same chamber also were trying to advocate for residents. I certainly didn't go first Thursday every month to have people be nasty to me because I wasn't trying to, uh, improve the situation. It would have been much easier not to do that. It'd be much easier to throw stones at Jefferson County and the airport. Couple of the things that I want to say just to this body for us to remember when we talk about economic impact. Economic impact is important. It's important to people's mental health, to have jobs. It's important to take care of their family. It's so important that in our strategic priorities, number four is economic vitality. Promote and support resilient economy that attracts and retains diversity of businesses, workers and industries, expands living wage jobs and diversifies our city's tax base. The airport does put forward to that. We have big corporations who are over, uh, off one hundred and eighth that enjoy the services that they can get from the airport. Um, so to say that it's all bad, I think is, is not, not fair to this community. It's not fair to the airport. Are there ways that we can improve? Hundred percent. And that's the work that we were trying to do at the CNR in my mind. So the only thing I have to say besides my soapboxing is I'm curious with you being here, and again, thank you for being here. Um, as you move forward into the community input, one of the things that we did talk, actually two things. One, the feedback portion, I think, was shared. You said that Jeffco wanted more feedback. That was something that we were talking about as the CNR. How do we do that? Is it a working group, um, having different stakeholders? So that is something that isn't a new idea. That is something that had been being talked about. Um, and I do think it's the right thing. So as we, on the same light, as we move down that path, how can Westminster and those of us who want to participate in being part of the solution, how do we do that? Or do you know what that looks like? Because I certainly think that, uh, you at least have a majority who would like to participate in that as a city.
Yeah, thank you for that question. Um, I don't have that exact answer now and we're really waiting for the airport director to start. Um, but we are having those conversations. So why don't we get together next week and start talking about what your interests are and what that looks like? And to start talking about planning that out. I mean, it really does take, um, all of us to kind of come together to figure out what does that group look like? And there are definitely interested parties, we just don't know the answer tonight. I would just say let's keep talking. There's several conversations happening and let's just figure it out together.
I appreciate that and I hope that that, uh, uh, channel of communication remains open because I do think it's going to be important for both the airport and the community.
Definitely, thank you.
I appreciate you coming and seeing both sides. Um, one question I have is how?
Counselor Ireland, if you don't mind, I have a bunch of folks that are wanting to go a second round. So I'm going to go real quick and then we'll go back around to catch everybody on the second one. Adding everybody to the list, okay. Um, so thanks. Thank you for this presentation, it's been very helpful, um, and your answers have been even more enlightening. Um, I, so just looking at the pictures, it's very interesting. You know, this, this airport, uh, was out in a dirt field. And as a planner, I know that, um, as residential developments come in, um, we do have to refer to the FAA. Um, in my current planning, uh, role, uh, for my day job, FAA consistently says no residential next to airports, they're adamant about it and they do threaten their grants, um, uh, the provision of grants based on those, um, those concerns. And so, um, I'm just kind of, do you, do you have any history regarding the, the neighborhoods that are in close proximity to the airport in terms of whether the FAA was supportive of those or not over time?
It would probably be good to have a research assignment on that. What I do know is the FAA is at a tricky spot. They control the air, they don't control the ground. And so most of the time, unless it's in a specific sliver of land called the runway protection zone, they can't offer money for us to purchase, you know, land where they prefer residential not be built. Uh, they can't force a town to rezone to something that would be more compatible with the airport. It's really a partnership between the airport sponsor and the surrounding communities to do that wisely. Uh, so we haven't always done that well here. I, obviously there are some neighborhoods underneath the direct path to our primary runway. Um, I know this airport has written, written letters and, I don't know, Jefferson County wrote letters recommending that that not happen. Uh, but there's other, you know, there's other reasons that municipality might approve residential anyway. And, you know, so it, it happened.
Right, so, I mean, and then there's, you know, there's disclosures that are provided to residents. Um, and, but it's like, we're here, you know, regardless of, of efforts. Um, I think we're here and we're, we are, we do have residents that are experiencing, um, operations. Having, you know, since, uh, let's see, twenty eleven, when the last master plan was completed, you know, operations have more than doubled. I know it's a little cyclical, but it's pretty, you know, it's, that's a lot. And it's a lot of the smaller aircraft that's, you know, can be noisy and flying low. So I don't want to discount at all the fact that we are dealing with a much different environment than probably when a lot of people moved into their homes, um, in terms of the noise impact. Um, so on that, uh, I'm going to skip some of my questions just to get to my ask. Um, the conference, the, the, the master plan, last updated in twenty eleven. Um, theoretically should be updated like any good master plan every five to ten years. Um, in your, uh, improvement plan, your airport improvement plan, if you could flip to that slide, you are looking at updating it in twenty twenty eight. Um, looks like in twenty twenty five, you're likely, um, not going to move forward with that new terminal design. You were very kind of, you know, iffy about whether that should, that million dollars should be spent then. I'd really like to see the, the master plan updated because of the increase in operations. I know you're saying that there's going to be some, um, flexing of those operations as the flight schools, um, reduce. But honestly, if you have a better idea of, you know, if you're, if you go into planning earlier than later, I think, I think it's really time. And not to put it off to twenty twenty eight, you have some significant, um, runway extensions to evaluate. And here's what I'm hearing. Um, with the south, the south end of the property, you really kind of poised to develop whether, you know, it's great that it's slowed a little bit, to be honest, because I'd really like us to have some strong policies. Instead of saying we hope to, really like to have some policy statements in the master plan that says, and the, the strategic business plan that says, these are the uses. They're low noise generating and they're low, low operating generating. I understand that, you know, point twenty-two in the lease says that you're going to have, um, allow for, you know, all users. Users are different than uses. And you can plan for uses and I'd like to have more, um, specific and directed language in your strategic plan slash master plan that says, here's what we're going to do. Because this is now, you can't, you're not in a field anymore and you are, you are, um, you know, very knowingly making certain business choices that do impact now in existing population. So I'd really like us to move forward with updating language that does solidify what you're saying you're already trying to do, but to be stronger about that. Um, the, I do, I do want to echo the, um, the communication approach that, um, Counselor Rosati brought up because it's certainly, it's so important for people to feel heard and validated. Um, and so I think in the, in the effort, as you move forward to how to talk to, um, and work with all of the different community members, I'd love to, you know, make sure that you have some stakeholders from the resident communities, from the neighborhoods, um, engaged in how that would be structured so that you're making sure they're feeling like there's a way to be heard. Um, okay, I'm going to go back around and let's try and keep them concise if we can in the interest of time and people being awake. keep them concise if we can, um, in the interest of time and people being awake. Um, all right, so next on my list, I have Counselor Carmelia.
Okay. Uh, a bit earlier, you had, uh, explained a little bit more about the business plan of the county for the airport. I just wanted to say thank you for explaining that piece because I think that helps clarify a lot of the questions, both for us and for residents, just, um, knowing that you're doing what you can to avoid further planes in the air where you can. Thank you for that piece. That's good to understand and mitigate further noise concerns. Um, and then, uh, as far as the, if we, if we do continue and create a new IGA with our communities and the county, to some of what Counselor Demott mentioned, uh, I had, I I know I spoke to Eric Butler, the county attorney, so thank you for that. He was fantastic. He provided lots of information. He was great. Uh, I had asked him if it was possible for our attorney in our city to be part of the, that new contract, uh, when we create that. And, you know, it's, it's obviously very up in the air, but, and so he didn't have a clear answer. But my ask is, can we be more involved when that contract is written so that to some of these comments that we're hearing, we can ensure to try to build in a format for our residents to be a little bit more involved, such as we've heard of CNRs where there's a resident who partakes as well as a council member. And to what Council Demott was mentioning, I just wanted to more clearly lay that out. We want to do what we can to be more actively involved when we rebuild that contract. Um, and so just want to put that out there. Thank you. Um, and then, uh, as far as the federal funds that you mentioned several times, I did not fully understand until about six to eight weeks ago, how that works with our airport. And so could you, just for the benefit of the council and our residents on record, explain more about how this works with the federal funds and what we stand to lose and what we would owe, for example, um, if we were to, you know, halt or delay or slow business?
The what we would stand to lose question, I would, I I think that's a better question for the FAA. I know the Denver ADO Airport District's Office, they're weighing into like the city of Boulder, discussing closing the airport and their position on what would be owed if that were to happen. Um, you know, what we obligate to is when we accept federal funds, it comes with a whole number of sponsor assurances. My understanding is some of those run, uh, in perpetuity, and some of them run for 20 years. But there's essentially, I think in the FAA's minds, a payback period if we were to try to not follow sponsor assurances. And it's, it's a, a amount of money I don't think the airport would, or the county, or anyone would be willing to pay, able to pay back.
Can we, and I hate to do this one more time, a little bit more layman's terms, say, okay, so we have federal funds because, you know, we allowed this airport to be built, right? And then, you know, just for the benefit of everyone to understand, so we received a certain amount of money, and now going forward, we technically owe that back, right, in some way or-
If, if we were to violate those, yes, we would be subject to a complaint from the FAA. And this is again, a better conversation with the FAA directly. But, um, so like one of the common conversations that comes up is can you ban touch and goes? Um, because that feels like something that could easily alleviate noise for the community. Um, but what we understand it to be is that would be a violation of one of the sponsor assurances in terms of restriction, restricting access to the airport. And we would be in a suit with the FAA at that point. And I don't know how that would ultimately impact our federal funds, previous or future, um, to be determined.
And again, it's an amount that we just don't have essentially. Right, it's an amount that, so we have to maintain that relationship, right? And to that point, I just wanted to say thank you as well for earlier, um, emphasizing the importance of maintaining the delicate relationship with the FAA and with the airport because so much of what they're doing is on a volunteer basis. So, um, thank you for working with them. I know that you're alluding to that earlier. It is a delicate relationship, and, um, we want to make sure we stay in it. So thank you.
Counselor Ha?
Yes.
Uh, Counselor Demott, twice, I've been upset when, um, we've had study sessions, and both times it's because I didn't feel like the health and safety of our residents were being taken seriously. And when I don't feel like the health and safety of our residents are being taken seriously, it is not my job to be nice, and I will not apologize, and you will not shame me into being quiet.
And I have a right to my opinion, and I think it's embarrassing to treat our guests that way.
And that's your opinion, but I'm sticking up for the health and safety of our residents.
Freedom of speech is great, isn't it?
Yes, it is. But you will not shame me into being quiet.
I was not trying to shame you.
Yes, by saying that I'm being an embarrassment, you are trying to shame me into being quiet. And I'm not going to, you are not going to do that to me.
Don't be quiet, that's fine. And I'm gonna say that it's embarrassing behavior to treat guests that way.
And it's embarrassing that the health and safety of our residents is not being taken seriously. That's what's embarrassing.
Counselor Ireland? I just have a question about the flight schools. Um, I'm sure the residents would like to know, since it ebbs and flows, and now it's at the height, how long does it take to get through flight school?
Depends, uh, if you're full-time or part-time. Um, I think you could get through all irradiance in probably about nine months. One of the reasons operations, um, so the US Congress adopted a rule that a commercial pilot to fly for an airline has to have 1,500 hours of flight time before they can fly in the right seat of an airliner. When you graduate from a flight school, you typically have 200 to 300 hours. So you have a gap of a lot. Um, so pilots have to do that. Usually they do it by flight instructing the next wave of students who come, uh, after them. But sometimes they do it by just flying around. They have to build their hours some way. Um, a lot, it's funny, a lot of the issues that are brought up here, it's just, it's interesting because they're federal issues that impact us, but we have no control over. And like, to that one, one of the, that was one of the most impactful things, the flight training was that, was that new rule to have to have 1,500 hours. Europe does not do it that way. Um, their, their right seat airline pilots, uh, start with much less time. So there's much less flying around, building up your hours. So there's ways to solve some of the issues your constituents have, but they're federal level issues. Okay, thanks for that.
And I think on average, it takes a couple of years to get through all of that, even though you could do it in shorter, I think, on average. I don't know the average, but it's, it's longer than what you could do if you went straight through. And, you know, it's, it's costly too, to put yourself through school, so.
Good question. Um, I think, do we, uh, Counselor Rosati?
I just want to say that, so you will get back to with those answers to the questions I had. Thanks.
Want to thank you for coming. I know you had a lot of hard questions, and we have a lot of passion for our community, and, um, we really do want to work with you and structure something where we can, um, make sure that we're seeing things move forward in a way that is, you know, in following with what your vision is and getting that articulated both on paper and to the community.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you for the time to be here this evening. And we also care about our community. We care about, um, all of our employees at the airport, or tenants at the airport, or community, or surrounding community, all of you. And so it's really important that we do figure out a way forward. There's definitely some short-term and long-term things we can do. Part of it is building trust and having that direct conversation and communication so that we all have the same kind of understanding, changing the format so that when people are having concerns or do have good solutions and ideas, we can actually talk through to figure out if there are ways forward. So I just appreciate it and, um, and just thank you for being so passionate and caring about your community as well to share those with us. And we'll continue to be in in touch with you. I apologize, we didn't have direct answers for you. A lot of this are things that we're trying to to stand up and get in place, like the part 150, the public engagement, our airport director coming in, you know, no shock, I don't have aviation experience. And so, so coming into this, thank God for Ben, who is a pilot, um, it's been really helpful. And that lack of that airport director position has really, you know, put us behind a little bit. And so we're really looking forward to that next phase and what that looks like. Just thank you.
And thanks for being here. I know it's not easy. It takes courage to, and you still came anyway. So appreciate it.
Thank you.
Um, I mean, do we recess, or are we gonna do the-
If I could just ask that, before we adjourn the study session, could we have a vote to, on the question of the exec session? So are we still on-
Yes, we're still on, yeah.
-our study session? So if that's acceptable, Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes.
The stu, the exec session that's agendized tonight is to consult with outside counsel and the city attorney on aviation legal issues pursuant to Westminster Municipal Code 113C8, Colorado Revise Statute 2464024B.
Okay. Got a poll from Counselor, say your name and whether you agree to go into his exec session.
OB, is that the yes?
Amber Ha, yes.
Can we clarify, uh, that this is to consult with, oh, this is to consult with an aviation lawyer, is that right?
Correct.
I-
We don't have questions.
I think that we should have discussed before taking the poll whether we have questions. And I think right now, my answer is no.
I don't have any questions anymore either.
I don't either.
Okay, I'll step back.
Oh, is that what this is?
You agree we have questions?
If we had questions.
If it was to address aviation legal questions, it'd be hap-
Oh, I thought you had something to tell us.
Pretty thoroughly.
Gotta go home, so.
I don't think, bye, goodbye.
I have two questions, and I don't think that it's worth however many, whatever we're paying for my two questions, so.
So it sounds like, do you want to go around and say no then? Is that what we do?
OB is adding no.
Amber Ha, no.
Clarissa, no, yeah, no.
Christine Ireland, no.
Sarah Nomal, no. Okay.
I thought there was like an important aviation issue.
Oh, what's going on?
Right, just meeting is adjourned.